This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:52.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, Tuesday, July 16th, 2019, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex-official member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. Slusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Let's stand as ready before the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz?
There are no changes.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 3.01, recognitions. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Mr. Jeff Whitney, Mayo Activities Director, to recognize a, one of our student athletes that participated in the state track meet.
Thanks, Board, Dr. Munoz, or Mr. Munoz, for having us down here. We didn't get down here right after the school season due to a few people traveling right after the season was over, so, but a very special moment at Mayo High School for us. We had a state champion in girls' track, and Brett Carroll, our head girls' track coach, is here to introduce her.
Thank you for having us here today. I have Annie Wendt, yep, come on up. You'll talk here in just a little bit. So, Annie, she, she broke the school record at Mayo High School in both the long jump and triple jump. She's everything that you want to see in a student athlete. Not only is she amazing in the track and field events, but she's also great in the classroom, earning Big Nine All-Conference Academic Honors. She's also a figure skater, who I've enjoyed watching in the figure skating show at the rec center in the springtime, and she helps out at the YMCA and works with kids, and she's just so down-to-earth, and she's, she's totally awesome. I'll let her talk to you about her, her parents, and then her plans for next year. Another coach, I don't really work with her directly, Jeff Schlichter, who's a paraprofessional at Mayo High School. He has been working with her hand-in-hand, and he does a great job with her. But Annie, if you want to just tell them about your plans for next year, and any other little tidbits about the state meet and how to jump far, take it away.
So, my parents are Kevin and Giselle Wendt, and next year, I'm planning to go to South Dakota State, and I'll be jumping there, and I'm planning to go into bio, human bio, and plan to go to med school after that. And I just, I guess I jump far.
Good job.
Thank you.
Are her parents here?
Say.
Are her parents here?
Are your parents here with you?
No.
Okay. We were going to have them stay in if they were, so. Okay, at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Queesley, Activities Director from Century High School, talk about the Minnesota State High School League video.
I'll have Mr. Whitney and Mr. Urkey come up here as well. And your board packet this evening, you have a resolution from Minnesota State High School League, and every couple of years, they ask us to change things up, and to, this year, we're to present a video. Board Member Seelinger has actually had an opportunity to see this, and at this time, we would like to...
By the time students reach middle school, their families have already spent an incredible amount of time, energy, and resources on their child's sports experiences.
Private coaches, tryouts, travel tournaments, and increasing pressure to specialize in a single sport at an early age.
The reality is, less than 3% of our athletes will ever go on to play college, and less than 1% of our athletes will ever play professionally.
This means 97% of students will have a terminal experience. When they graduate, their competitive playing days are over, so what's the purpose?
The purpose is the human growth and development of our students, and connecting them to caring adults in their learning community.
For this to happen, it takes leadership and a community aligned around this purpose.
The purpose of a caring adult in students' lives has never been more important. Students face an incredible amount of pressure. There's peer pressure, and social pressure, and academic pressure, and pressure to perform on the playing field or in the arts area. And what that's resulting in is a mental health crisis, where kids are facing anxiety and depression. There's a study called "Hardwired to Connect" that identifies three fundamental needs that every human being has. The need to belong, the need to have some type of moral development, and we define moral as relationships to other people, and then that base community, which is really being held accountable to a set of expectations and boundaries. Athletic and activity programs can really provide a caring community for students. It's a place for them to be connected.
One, two, three! Hockey!
Ladies on three! One, two, three! Drive!
It takes leadership to intentionally create connections, and to create a culture that supports students in a caring community.
My purpose statement is to coach, to create a love of the game, and foster community and growth among our student athletes.
Shift your weight forward and backward. Good.
The AD is the front-facing public person that's really leading the charge for all of the things that happen within that program, that again, are so beneficial to the student.
A strong activities director or athletic director is going to have the pulse of their school, is going to influence and impact the students through others, and create that experience that we're looking for, for all kids.
In my particular role as the Activities Director, I call it leading from the middle out. I need to work with my principal and my superintendent, and I need to work with my school board to understand what purpose-based activities are, what they look like, what they should feel like with our student athletes. And then I need to train coaches, work with athletes, work with our student body.
The value of a, of a strong Activities Director for the entire system is something that I can't put a price tag on.
We've got three brand-new board members.
And it's important for school board members to understand the purpose of our activities and athletic programs, so that they remember their role in supporting our work, in supporting our staff, and in supporting Activities Director and what he does.
There you go. Cool.
We are really here to change the arc of every athlete's life. I think the most important thing I do is connect students to each other, connect students to the school day, connect students to meaningful adults.
We want to win a state tournament. We want to have a winning record, but what's most important than that is having a winning culture.
It's all about the student experience, and that doesn't necessarily equate to winning, but that, that equates to being able to walk away saying, "I had fun. I got better. I did the best that I could. I want to continue. I know more about myself, and I'm more prepared for whatever might come my way in the future."
We have to align our communities in order for athletic administrators and coaches to be supported.
Our school board knows that we're about more than just wins and losses, that we're part of the educational program and part of the educational system. It's great to be able to show up at work every day, knowing that you're supported by your school board, your superintendent, and your principal, and that you have the ability to support your coaches, athletes, participants, and their families. It's very important that you have all of those important stakeholders in alignment, and that they understand what the common language is, and what it means to have a successful experience.
My purpose as a captain is to use the sport of baseball to help teach life lessons that'll help, help people down the road.
The adults are purposeful and deliberate about engaging with students, about something bigger than themselves. I may do it in my social studies classroom by teaching history, and I may then later do it in my role as a softball coach, but the experience that the kids get, that alignment that is tied through, is that we are here to impact your life in a positive way.
There's no more rewarding feeling for me as an Activities Director to hear them say that they became a better person through their participation in our activities.
I think the greatest thing that a school board can do is to define success, to publicly state that here's how we are going to define success within our school community. Are we growing and developing better people? Are we modeling the kind of character that we want our students to leave our school communities with and go into the world with? Awareness is critical. We have to be aware of the purpose of why sports are a part of our school community. And finally, not only do we have to hold our coaches accountable, we have to hold our school communities accountable, to the transformative power of what sport can be, and that is connecting students to caring adults in their learning community.
So, at this time, we're supposed to ask you if there are any follow-up questions that you would like to ask about what we've been doing with the educationally-based activities program in the last couple of years?
I just have a comment and a question. Excellent video, excellent message, and for somebody who's been around education for a really long time, I am absolutely convinced that our extracurricular activities have a huge part, and can make a huge difference in kids' lives, and that it's not about creating superstars, but it's about creating that kind of community. I, I love that purpose-based thing, community for kids where they can grow, and feel part of something, and have other experiences. I, I guess my question is, as, and I am in awe of the work you do, because I know it never ends, and your days are long, and go into the night, and sometimes the next morning. My question is, what's sort of the biggest challenge that you, as Activities Directors, face? Better be a good answer, too.
I'll give one tidbit about the video before I'd answer that question. Dr. Renee Corneal, the, the, from St. Anthony Village, was a Division One softball player that started at catcher at Mayo High School. She was in that video, she's now a superintendent in St. Anthony. So, a Mayo athlete alumni in the video promoting what was important to her in high school, obviously.
Jeff, I'm assuming that you were responsible for this?
I'm sure I led the, I was the AD when she was there, so it tells you how old I am. But anyway, I think one of the most important things we do is, is, in this day and age, is to, to teach kids to be committed to something, to, you know, to follow rules and have expectations. There's just a lot of things out there now where kids can do a lot of things that, you know, they can go in a direction that's not good sometimes, but they can also be committed to something that shows that they have the energy and the drive. Their goal set it, and I think it's, it's, our biggest job right now may be to find coaches that can instill that in them. It's a, it's a business now that people don't do it for more than three to five years sometimes. At Mayo High School, I had Lauren Grasso as the head boys hockey coach for 50 years, as you know, your son played for him. Right now, you might not find a coach that'll be a head coach for five to 10, and it's hard to find those people that can deliver that material and deliver that, that setting day in and day out, and make things fun for kids, and connect with kids on a daily basis to do the things that they're talking about there. So, it's hard, and we all have, if you were to look at the HR page for coaches, we all have coaches still to hire for this fall, and it's starting in three weeks. So, it, I think that's probably the biggest challenge, and anything that we can do to promote people to want to get into this business, and to coach kids, and, and, you know, be important in kids' lives, and teach them these values that they're talking about, that's probably, in my opinion, the biggest challenge.
Director Seelinger.
Can I, can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Just, one of the other challenges that we face is the farther you go and, and move up, and, and become athletic administrators and activities administrators, you get a little bit removed from kids. So, that's why it's so important, as we were all young coaches, working with kids, it was easy to make that connect. It gets har, it gets harder when we, when we become administrators. So, one of the most important things we can do is work with our coaches, and, and that's kind of what this training is about, and this cohort that we belong to, is to make sure that we're working with coaches to stay connected with kids through our coaches.
No, thank you. So, I, as Mark said, I did get to see the video at the, the meeting, and I was quite impressed with the, the purposeful and the community aspects of it, and since you're here in front of us, allowing us to ask questions. Not being a sporty person myself, and seeing the, you know, the dollar amount, I think, is, you know, is quite stunning. So, how do we have a philosophy in general, or in our district, to help, to help provide equity to students who may not be able to have taken that hockey lesson at four, you know, age four and all the way up? And how do we, how can we onboard students who come in the system at any point, to be able to give them an experience, and that caring adult that we really want them to have?
That pay-to-play mentality is another part that Dr. Marvin was, that we're dealing with more and more. We really try to make sure that we keep these activities affordable for students. We really, truly try not to come to the board with raising participation fees and that type of thing. We also, within the fundraising that the teams do, that there's money set aside for kids that cannot afford certain pieces of equipment, or certain spirit wear that the team is wearing, that those students have an opportunity to receive that, those items, and so, it is getting harder. I think even in Rochester, our amateur athletic activities generate over $25 million for the community of Rochester. And so, that's a significant amount of money that's coming into Rochester, and there's an expectation there. And sometimes, it's a very lofty expectation, and so, for us, to pull it back and be, stay the educational focus is very important for us, because we're not a club organization. We really want to make sure that the students are maintaining behavior, attending class every single day, every hour of the day, and being good role models and good citizens within our community and abroad for us, so. I think another thing is, Mr. Munoz has been extremely helpful when we have a large number of kids that try out for certain programs, to help support us with another assistant coach possibly, or something like, which is usually, if, some sports, they cut kids, and we can't keep them all based on our rosters, but some sports, we're able to have an, you know, all the kids can run track, you know, 120 kids. Well, it's hard for three coaches to manage 120 kids in 50 different places. So, to keep all those kids, they still are paying that fee. Oftentimes, their fees offset hiring the extra assistant coach. We're allowed to keep as many kids as we can involved, they're able to experience all the things that you just witnessed on the video, but for a very small price, and we're, we've had the flexibility to do that. And many of our programs, all three of us have programs that have hundreds of kids, the track programs, the cross-country programs, our football programs, are unlimited numbers, so that we just have to encourage coaches to get participation out, and we're, we've been able to keep those kids out, and support the ones that maybe didn't have the, the way to do it in youth sports.
Thank you.
Director Slusner?
So, kind of along the lines of the expectations, I appreciate if you see the discussion of the mental health aspects in there, extremely important in all aspects today. I was curious, you know, having a daughter just went through high school, and seeing the, the expectations the, the student athletes put on themselves, and the anxieties they put on themselves, what kind of training do our coaches get to, kind of keeping an eye out for that, and looking for those students who are perhaps overpushing themselves, causing self-anxiety issues?
Well, one of the good things about being involved in an extracurricular activity is you're going to work the different side of the brain than you are holding a book, and I think that really helps balance those students to walk away from the academics for one or two hours at the end of the day, and rejuvenate themselves, rather than go right home and dive into the, the homework. That break itself is rewarding for their mental health, not only just the stress relief, but just the long-range, long-term benefit of that. I exercise every single day, and if I didn't do it, I feel like I'm a caged animal some days. So, I can imagine what some of these students are feeling like when they finish a very rigorous academic day. And so, our coaches, we try to talk with them about recognizing that. We talk about, there's a new study out by the University of Minnesota that talks about that integrity of students, and what they're trying to do, and how much that they're trying to do within an academic day, and, and pushing themselves too hard. And we're forgetting, they need to be kids, too. They need to get out and just enjoy an ice cream cone after school, or enjoy being with their friends. The sports medicine department has also helped us with the nutritionists, one day a week coming into our building, and they have also made a sports psychologist available to us. We used one with our boys' and girls' basketball program last winter that was very beneficial, and helped those coaches understand, "We're not getting anywhere today. What, what is the underlying issue?", and basically stop and practice, and finding out why the students weren't clicking that day, so. Because also, also as part of this Why We Play initiative, every coach that coached for us, volunteer, paid, head coach, all the way down, watches for professional education, continuing education videos, and has to do that before the season starts. It covers everything from the Why We Play initiative, to the, the concussions, all of those things, and, and mental health is covered in those, in some of those videos as well. So, even if you're a volunteer, you're going to get some of that continuing education video and, and webinars that our coaches need to...
It's great to hear.
And Ken, why don't you speak to the non-related athletic aspects of MSHSL?
Sure. The, we have solo ensemble, which is our band orchestra and choir, and they'll compete in, end of January, and that's Minnesota State High School League. Robotics is another component that is a partner of the High School League, and then also the clay target is another partner. And then we also have speech, debate, one-act play, or all other, excuse me, visual arts is another component. So, there is the non-athletic component of that as well, so. Lot of opportunities there, and as you see, our fees are going up a little bit, but again, we're offering quite a few opportunities for kids to find their niche, to find their connectedness in their high school setting.
Director.
One other question. Do you have, I know all of us have been contacted over the years by parents, good, good parents, whose kids are involved in extracurriculars, especially in sports, and they have very specific ideas about what needs to be happening, especially for their child on, on the field, and, and I don't know how much pressure that puts on coaches, but do you have any kind of parent training? I mean, parents need to be involved with their kids, and they need to be aware, but from my sort of academic background, I keep thinking that there should maybe be a line there between how much parents can get involved in terms of telling the coaches what they need to do.
Great, great question, because about three weeks ago, as the president of the Athletic Directors Association, I met with the president of the Coaches Association and the Minnesota State High School League staff, and we talked about that issue. We're hoping to have a video like this out, talking about the 10 to 12 issues that are on the forefront in every community about parent involvement. And so, we're hoping to have that one ready for our PAC meetings in a couple of weeks. We haven't seen that one yet, but that is another part that's ever, ever evolving for us. So, all three of those entities feel like we need to do something now, and give support for each other, so that's why it's a three-pronged approach.
Is that any part at all, do you think, and maybe this is something you don't want to talk about, about why it's more challenging to get and retain coaches?
Yeah, I think it's definitely part of it, yeah. And one of the things I always talk about, our coaches at JM about is, sometimes they might feel frustrated with getting help from parents, but if you think about it, the first coach, the first teacher that our students ever had was a parent or a grandparent or somebody. So, they are invested. They talked about the money in the video, not, not only money, but time. So, I thi, I think it's important that we create opportunities for our coaches to have avenues where they can talk with parents. And we want, always want to make sure that there are appropriate avenues, and they don't cross lines, but, but their voice also should be heard. So, when we have PAC meetings, and we, we break out to the individual coaches or, or team meetings, I always stress with our coaches that they need to make sure that they've created an avenue in which parents can contact them and talk to them, too. Because some of the, even the, the mental health things that we talked about, coaches might see things different, behaviors, that they want to be able to talk to parents, too. So, there's a whole lot of other reasons where we want to have those avenues open.
What's a PAC meeting?
Parent, athlete, and coach.
Oh.
And we do it, we do them three times a year, at the beginning, fall, winter, and spring season.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
3.02, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Updates of board members? Consent Agenda. This is an action item. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration?
Move approval. A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I would like to recognize, we have four individuals, retirement. The first one is Pamela DeVicke. She's a physical education teacher at John Marshall. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 3, 2019. Been with the district 29 years. The next one is Janet Willis, music teacher at Franklin, Bamber Valley, Churchill, and Hoover Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 3. Been with the district 10 years. And one that I'm truly going to miss, Mr. John Dixon, Superintendent's Secretary at Edison Building, retirement effective, well, he's gone already, July 9, and we've noticed it immediately. He's been with the district 20 years. And then, paraprofessional, Michael Hennessy, Special Education Para at Jefferson Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 30, 2019. He has been with the district two years, so we want to thank all four of those individuals for their service to our district.
5.01, Discipline Data Update informational item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, at this time, we're going to have the, the team come on up and present this information.
I'll stand. Good evening, Board. I was, I had good afternoon slash good evening, so we are in the evening time. We're happy to be up here in front of you tonight to talk about our discipline data for the 18-19 school year, and I thank the team for joining me up here and taking time out of their summer to help us present. I have the first set of slides. Don't know, don't really need the clicker when you're standing right here, I guess. So, as you see the points to consider, this, again, is, I don't know how many years I've been up here presenting this, quite a few, this is our Level Two discipline data, and that means it's something that usually involves an administrator, it's not a classroom-managed behavior, which we refer to as a Level One behavior. This data is yet to be finalized, and the, in fact, we found a problem with the data just the other day, and as we look at the, at the data from the top down, as we are starting to look at referrals to law enforcement, we noticed a site that just didn't seem right. We reached out to the site and confirmed there was a, a data entry problem there. So, we just want to give that, I guess, disclaimer that we might, as we continue to sift through and look at very specific items, that we might find irregularities and need to make slight changes. I think the change that we made added seven or eight referrals to law enforcement that we caught this week, and we are, we corrected that, thanks to Ms. Edgar and Chris for getting that in to you, so you have that accurately in front of you tonight. Overall, we had a reduction of 6% referrals from last year to this year. There were also fewer students that received referrals, and you can see that this year, where there were 1,536 students who received referrals, and last year, there were 1,562. And we continue to see that trend, where a small number of students account for a very large number of referrals. Some other points to consider... Some other points to consider as we're going through the data, um, there are, the students who are identified as American Indian and Hispanic were referred at a rate consistent with their enrollment during the school year, um, or under, even under their enrollment. Last year, if you remember, we started looking at free and reduced lunch, English learner and special education. The, these groups are all referred disproportionately. And as we get to that slide a little bit further on, we can show you that we've, we've seen an improvement when you look at students who qualify for free and reduced lunch and special education. They are more proportionate to their enrollment. And the last bullet on the slide, student who are, students who are identified as black and more than one race, continue to be referred disproportionately to their enrollment. And we have, as we look at students who are identified as black, those students, their office referrals have become slightly more proportionate in the 1819 school year. And as you'll see on the slide a little later, that, uh, students who are identified as more than one race, we're still looking at a, this is, uh, we looked back a year and so we're able to get two years' worth, but we're, they're disproportionate and we don't have probably a, a baseline like we'd have with our other groups at this point. Uh, this is our big table that we present every year. This is the district, um, numbers. And we have 1819 on the top of that table and 1718 on the bottom. And if you recall, last year, we were looking at race, we were looking at local race codes. So there were five race codes and this year we switched to the federal race codes, which are seven. And that's where you add in the Hawaiian group, um, the group that are identify as more than one race. So you, that's where you jump up from five to seven. And you can see last year, so what we did to make it a better comparison is we went back and pulled our last year's data and pulled that federal race code instead of our, uh, local race code. And what that does is that'll change the enrollment. If you remember at the beginning of the year or mid-year when we looked at the enrollment, changing from five to seven race code actually brings down the enrollment in every race except students who are Hispanic and students who identify as multiple, more than one race. So it's going to, and that's going to change their enrollment a little bit. So as we pull that, you can see that, um, we, if, if we look at the, I'm sorry, the third line down on each table, I'm sorry, the fourth line down, right? If we look at this line right here, this is, when we, as we've gone through this and worked our way through this data over the past several years, we take the number of, or the, sorry, the percentage of referrals and divide that by the percentage of enrollment. And that's what we use to determine how proportionate we are. If it's one, that means that, for instance, that group of students is 10% of the enrollment and 10% of the referrals. If it's higher than one, that means that there are more students being referred than enrollment. And you can see that when we look at our students who are, um, who identify as black or more than one race, their referrals divided by enrollment is more than one, and that means that's that disproportionality piece. And as I mentioned on an earlier slide, if I pointed out here, when we look at referrals for students who are black for level twos, we see a 2.73 and that was a 2.84 last year. So a, a slight improvement, I would characterize that as. Multi-race, more than one race or we're still trying to figure out the best way to identify this. So you might hear us switching back and forth between more than one race, race and multi-race. That one, as we go back and pull last year's data, that was not a category last year. As we pulled that last year, we see that that was a 1.45. So that was, um, 7.7% of the referrals and 5.3% of the enrollment. This year, 10.2% of the enroll, uh, referrals and 5.9% of the enrollment. Again, with two years, I don't know if that baseline is what direction that's going to go where with our other groups, we have multi, multiple years of data that that we've been tracking longer. Last year, the board asked us to also review our referral rates for the groups of, um, that students who qualify for free and reduced priced lunches, special education, as well as limited English proficiency. This is actually, there's an error down here. We, I was able to go back and saw from last year's presentation that we do have three years of data on this. But as we look at 1819 compared to 1718, we made gains in all areas. So if you look at that, referrals divided by enrollment, for instance, free and reduced were roughly twice as likely, um, to be referred than their enrollment this year. It's almost right down to one. Special education went from 3.89 to 2.27. And limited English proficiency, not as dramatic of a drop from, about a 1.76 to a 1.53. We looked back at, um, our totals from 1617 and that was a year that we had a lot more referrals and we tried to avoid refer, doing a lot of comparing to that year as we had like 12,000 referrals. But the, the rates or that referral divided by enrollment was for free introduced lunch was 2.13. For special education, 1.86. And for limited English proficiency, 2.17. So we've shown decreases in free introduced lunch and limited English proficiency over three years. Special education's bumped, bumped around a little bit. They started 1.86, jumped way up to 3.89 in 1718, and then this year they're down to 2.27.
Carl, would you prefer us to wait till you complete the, uh, presentation to ask questions or?
Up to you.
I had a question, but then in asking that question, I lost sight of the question.
I had a question, or more of a statement. This is really, the, last year was the first year of the new handbook guideline rules, et cetera. So, so I guess in my mind, comparing to three years ago, it doesn't make any sense because there are different rules. So it's good to see this year's as a common comparison to last year's.
And I just made that last comparison because I inadvertently wrote two years and then when I went back and I did see that we had the third year. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't leave that part out. And then when we look at our district overall, and this is more focused on the students, again, that small number of students accounting for a large percentage of the referrals. If we look at this year, um, 7.7% of the students received referrals, which means 92.3 had zero referrals. Every year we try and do this, we kind of try and find that 50% of referrals. And as you're dragging down through who had 10 referrals, nine, eight, seven, six, it's, et cetera. That break between four referrals and five referrals is kind of that 50% range. So if we take all the students who had four or more referrals, they accounted, those 292 students or 1.5% of the enrollment accounted for 53% of the referrals. And then if we take it a little bit further, kind of trying to find a roughly a quarter of the referrals, 62 students or 0.3% of the enrollment accounted for 24.6 of those referrals. And then those are students who had 10 or more. And then I, a couple of years ago, I think that was a question, how many students had one referral? We kind of carried that over. We had 825 students who had one, only one referral. This again is similar to the, um, information we provided last year. Referrals by level, if we look at the total number of referrals for 1819, you can see those elementary, 1897, middle, 1729, high, 450, a total of 4,076. And that, the, the corresponding percentages. And then the percentages from 1718. Most common offenses for referrals overall are the same as they were last year. And again, last year, 1718 would have been when we standardized our, uh, student behavior handbook and tried to remove some of those more subjective categories. So your top two are, your top three, I'm sorry, areas that result in referrals are the same. And the numbers that correspond.
Carl, is it possible to, um, provide an example in that these are level twos, which are then handled at administrative level? If I understood the process correctly. Uh, so what would, uh, as an example, usually occur in the instance of, um, either of these top three categories, a referral based on physical aggression or interruption of learning environment?
If it's okay, I'd probably, I'd ask one of our principals to respond to that since they.
Was the question, what, uh, what would be, how would we respond to behavior like that?
Certainly, yes.
I suppose physical aggression as opposed to fighting would be students refusing or, um, being aggressive in a manner that didn't lead to a fight. Many ti- and many times we address that, um, in the office, so it's outside of the classroom to remove that kind of a disruption. Sometimes they come from teachers, sometimes they come from, um, you know, students passing in the hallway. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was really, in part, but, uh, so from, in our, excuse me if I don't recall your positions, are any of you principals?
I'll forget my.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, uh, what do you usually do? How do you handle, uh, a referral? And maybe you answer that and I just spaced it out.
I would say.
Physical aggression specifically.
Okay. Um, so I'm the principal at Kellogg Middle School. And so we have, um, we've had a number of physical aggression issues kind of throughout the year. I think it depends on the circumstance, um, and also depends on if it's a repetitive type of behavior that we see from a student. Oftentimes we'll use, um, the mediation service and have them help students resolve conflict. We'll talk with parents, try to get to the root of whatever the behavior is. And then in some cases, consequences are appropriate. In some cases, the mediation is the most appropriate resolution for it.
I have sort of a follow-up question. We hear a lot from students and, and others that when there is any kind of an altercation, either fight, physical aggression, whatever, that, um, one kid gets sent to the office and the other kid doesn't. And that that's part of the reason for the disparity. How do you, as a principal and your staff, ensure that it, that it's objective in terms of not punishing, suspending, talking to certain kids more than certain other kids who might both be involved?
Right, two guys, one person, sir, let her, you'd like me to speak to it?
Well, I would say a lot of it comes on information that we get from the adults that are in the area and the students themselves. And so if a student is saying, well, why didn't you talk to that student? We do talk to that student. And what I'll let that other student know is, I, I will be talking with all students that are involved. You're just not going to see me talking to that other student, just like that other student isn't seeing you talking to me right now. Those are private things that we keep separately. And so frequently, they don't see what happens with the other student and they may be under the perception. And so I'll have conversations with students where I will tell them, you know, I can't tell you exactly everything that is happening with that other student, but I want to assure you that something is, that I am having that conversation with the other student.
If I'm an angry parent and my kid comes home and says, I, I was in the office today and they didn't do anything to the other kid, and I call you because I'm ticked off, will you tell me that the other kid was suspended?
I can't tell you what that consequence is. And I will have that exact same conversation with the parent that I had with the student.
Okay.
That I can share in general, generalities, how we handle these situations and the investigation process that we use. And typically what a range might be for a particular behavior. But I'm not allowed to share with you the exact consequence that another, um, parent's child has received. Just like I can't share with the other student's parent and that parent may be just as mad at me as you are, I also can't tell them what has happened with your child.
So because somebody doesn't know the consequence, doesn't mean that there wasn't one?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
I would add, I think there's a, a layer of reteaching that we do in the office, um, to give supports to children. So, I mean, we're at the elementary level and, and so we're working with children that are learning to know how to do school. Um, and so there's a reteaching part of it too, that we work through role plays or talk through scenarios and, um, to help children understand and learn in the process. There is a consequence, but really more it's the reteaching is where the power is.
So in the area of, um, the teenage of social media where parents may not want to know, but don't know, but kind of hear about what did happen or didn't happen, how does that affect, not the decision you make, but then the addressing the, the school climate, if you will, the learning environment, uh, the following day or days following a particular incident that may have drawn, if you will, school-wide attention and potentially a coverage by a, a local media outlet?
It's being visible. So if there's a situation that happens at one of our schools, it's being visible. So there's somebody there, somebody's seen. So kids feel there's a safety still piece going on. If there was a large incident that took place at a high school, let's say, that there's people around that they can feel safe. And they're also going to notice the kids that were probably involved aren't there. Even though I can't tell you why they're not there.
I would say too, we work really hard to make sure that, um, if students end up in some sort of altercation or a fight, that we work to have a plan for when they return. So, um, making sure that they're going to feel safe, that both parties are heard and both parties are feeling safe. It might mean adjustments to schedules, it might mean additional supervision. It might mean, um, it often means reentry meetings with families just to say, you know, we're, we're ready for a fresh start. Every kid makes mistakes and, um, we want to make sure that kids come back and feel successful, but that both, both kids are feeling ready to be there and be successful. So we don't have some sort of an outcome that, that we don't want to see when they return.
Thank you. I know this is really out of order, but maybe you guys should introduce yourselves. But I didn't have a chair. I think it just totally.
All right. Um, I'm Heather Hogan. I'm principal at Sunset Terrace.
I'm Kristin Engbrecht. I'm principal at Bamber Valley.
Angie McAndrews, principal at Kellogg.
Chris Ling and director of elementary and secondary. And the chair is my fault. Last time Carl stood, so Wendy asked Carl, are you sure? I said, no.
That's okay. Just, no problem at all. It's good to stand a little bit. This is our, um, removal slide. Um, and what we've, as we've presented this information to the board the past several years, what we've done is included both out-of-school suspension and administrative removals and what we term removals. Um, so, and as I was reviewing and preparing for this, I have a big binder in my office that goes back to that, I don't know, 15, 16, or even before that. And just, that's something we tip, we consistently refer to this time of year as our removals are calling out both out-of-school suspensions and administrative removals. Um, you can see the breakdown for 1819. Um, we do have an increase in our out-of-school, our, our removals and from 976 to 1223. And we did be- become more disproportionate in our removals for students who are identified as black and multi-race as well between those two years.
Uh, Dirk, excuse me.
Yeah, again, can you just, um, define, these are out-of-school suspensions?
Yes.
And then what's the difference between a suspension and administrative removal? Is there a?
Yeah, a, a suspension would be a situation where the student is prohibited from attending school up to 10 school days. Administrative removal would be a day or less of removal. And again, these guys might be better to explain it. But I think those are situations where if that student is unable, saying they start out the morning, have a rough morning, come to school and just aren't settling down, the principal maybe contacts the parent and they remove, have that student sent home from 11 o'clock for the rest of the day. That would qualify as admin removal. If you change your admin rules a little bit to where if they started the day, then that could be an admin removal. But if they don't start the day, if it's a one-day suspension, we still call it an OSS. Admin removal is if they've been there for part of the day, can we move them from, from that point on?
Okay, thank you.
If you remember back when we talked about this winter, January-ish, February, whenever we were here, we talked about vaping as being the big thing. That was the increase. That was an increase, but there's still more of an increase than what the vaping took place. And then I think the next information, we go into the buildings. So I think Kristin was.
Carl, we can't see that board, so something goes where I can be able to.
So Heather and I will be sharing some of the elementary data, um, building by building. So the first building would be my building, Bamber Valley Elementary School. And we had a total of 190, um, level two referrals, um, this past year. And with 92.7% of our students having zero referrals. Bishop, um, for the 1819 school year had 50, um, level two referrals with 94.7 of their students having zero referrals.
I think what we did last year is just gave you some time to review the slides. So I'm just going to kind of leave it up there for a few minutes so you can.
Yeah, this way they can see, there's going to be some buildings where you're going to see buildings did show some, uh, improvements and disparities. For example, on Bishop, if you look under, um, multi-race or slight improvement.
For example, in Bishop, if you look under multirace, there's a slight improvement, whereas blacks, they pretty consistent at that 8%. Hispanic went down a percent. Dirk, excuse me.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I have a question about cell size, and they aren't reflected here in the first, in Bamber and Bishop, but others. How are we protecting our American Indian students that we know that might be a smaller cell size, but we're representing in some of the buildings, maybe one or two are smaller amounts, so that we're keeping those, you know, the privacy of those students? So just can you speak to that a little bit, about how you make sure that we're protecting those student numbers?
We're doing it by that less than 1%, so it's the same thing we do with Hawaiian students. We've got someone not identifying, especially with suspensions, because to that lower number, we try to make sure that we're using that less than or greater than number-
I'm sorry, I can't hear quite as good. Thank you, Kristal.
We're trying to help with, even with our Hawaiian students, too, because they're so small in our cell number, that we're using that less than and greater than piece to help with that. And when it's in that 1 and 2, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
All right. At Churchill, they had 153 referrals for the 1819 school year, with 86.6% of their students with zero referrals.
Before you go on, I do, I do want to tell you, when we were looking at this information, this is something that would cause us to dig a little deeper and have a one-on-one conversation with the administrator, not only the fact that the overall number went up considerably, but if you look at the percentage of students that had zero referrals, it's lower than what our district percentage is. So those, those are types of information that say, "We need to dig a little deeper and have a conversation with the administrator on why, why we're seeing what we're seeing." And there may be a really good reason for that, but, so this just happened to be one slide that, as we were going through a cabinet, that caught our attention and caused us to say, "We need to dig a little deeper and talk about why we're seeing what we're seeing."
If I could follow up on that, too. I'm not really quite so concerned about the number of referrals, because as you said, being sent to the office can be a really good learning experience, that this child leaves, knowing something, feeling better, making a connection. I mean, that can be a positive thing. But the disparity, disparity, disparity is concerning, and question for a school like Churchill, for every school for that matter, what are they doing with this data? You know, Mr. Munoz said you talk with the administrators. How do the staff deal with this? They get this, and some of these numbers are not good. So what happens at that building?
Yeah, I can, I mean, part of PBYS is they're looking at their discipline data on a monthly basis, but in August, they have two days, it's called data retreat, and they look at all of the data. It'll be behavior data, it'll be academic data, and from all of that data, their team, and it's not just their administration, they'll have teachers as part of that team as well during those two days. And then even some of the secondary buildings have now had students part of those two days, but, so they look at their data and say, "What are our goals for, for the school year, based on data?" And it may not always just be academic, there may be, we need to have a specific goal in behavior based on the data that we're seeing. So it's really a part of the data that they'll look at when they determine their school improvement plan this August.
And then, some of our, one of our middle schools does have a, I'm not going to say the right term, it's, it's a student assistance team that they have, that they look at their referrals every, I think it's every week or every two weeks, and that's how they look at their kids and go, "Are we meeting the needs of these kids that are getting the referrals?" And if a kid's on there 10 times, they are looking at, "Okay, what, where are we not meeting this kid, and what are we not doing?" And that's John Adams, you'll see their data here in a little bit. But they're meeting with those, their kids, and their belief, when they look at their referrals or Level IIs, is they're looking at trying to help the students. If you look at their referrals compared to some of the other ones, when you say you look at referral data, and the disparities there and all that stuff, you also have to look at suspension data and where that is, because that's where kids are losing some of their time. But we have schools that are doing things to at least look at the data.
So they're looking not just at the numbers, but the students that are behind those numbers?
They're looking at that, so John Adams looks at that student and go, "Okay, what things, what supports are we not providing this student? What supports can we help with?"
Okay.
And that's the piece that they're doing.
So at Bamber Valley, we have a behavior team meeting every Tuesday morning, that's our admin team, our school social worker, next to us counselor will be a part of it, and then our special education coach. We look every week at what students are getting referrals, how do we give more supports, what's going on, can we work with the family more closely, is there something in the classroom we can support better with? Does a student have other needs that maybe we're not addressing? And we look every single week, student by student, the ones that are struggling, and then how do we give more supports for that, that particular student?
And I would echo that. We do the same thing at Sunset Terrace with a weekly meeting that looks at our action plan for students, and then also our grade level teams, and our special areas teachers and special ed team have a PLC that's specifically focused on a building behavior goal. So then they are also referring, looking at that data and what their action plan is to work with their students.
So what I'm hearing is that at your sites, you're not just saying, "What's wrong with this kid?", but what needs to change? What do we need to do differently? What needs to happen so that we can do better for this child? Thank you.
So I tend to take perhaps an opposing view of Director Marvin. I never thought it was a good thing to be referred to the principal's office.
I was never referred, so there's-
But that being said, so there are the site meetings which occur and data retreats which are scheduled, so is it safe to, and my dad always told me, broke the word assume down, but should I anticipate, for instance, in this instance, Churchill and their data retreat, these 33 students, which have been referred on an average of 4.6 times, their individual, for want of a better word, profiles or referrals will be looked at, and plans will be developed, and supports perhaps made available to the families, staff, and students. Is that generally how this works? Or you had referenced in terms of what you guys do at Sunset and Bamber, is that how you usually address it, or is it-
It would be done before that. It would be done before that data retreat. If there's something going on in, and we're looking at our data in April, I, we're doing it before August's data retreat. The data retreat is what we're looking at for future things here now, and we're looking at last year's data, yes. But as far as those planned things, we've got them in place for those kids early on. And in the case of Churchill, you know, Mr. Munoz talked about that they, that we kind of looked at this, like, "Okay, something's not right here." Yeah, they knew right away, like, "Yep, we've done this, this, this with these number of students, and this student was this, and this student was that." So they had a plan in place, exactly.
So Superintendent, I might suggest, in future presentations and/or alternate ways to inform the board community, as does relate to discipline data, to provide and or share, and this is what we're doing, not just providing numbers in terms of what has occurred, but solutions in terms of what has been presented, that way for individuals such as myself and those within the community or citizenry, when they may read or view or hear, they'll know that these just aren't incidences of occurrence, but that there have been plans developed and supports provided. And I think a big part of, correct me if I'm wrong, a big part of PBYS is not only looking at the student and the behavior, but even looking in locations. I think at one time, we shared with you that an elementary looked at, we were having a lot of behavior in this one area, and they found out, "Well, we have way too many kids going down this hallway at the same time," so they changed the direction of some grade levels at lunch, and it went away. So it's, they're looking at the big, the whole picture, and I do, part of the RTI model is you're monitoring the interventions you're trying, and if they're not working, check-in, check-out, it's not working, then we drop it and go to a, try to different, different, and then that's all kept part of your PBYS work that you do.
We can look by day, you know, day of the week that's, that might pop more situations. We look at time of day, we look at locations, we look by grade level, by gender.
Director Selinger, and then Schluessner.
Yeah, I just was for my own, you know, thought process, and Mr. Ling, I really appreciate that you're saying, "Are we meeting the needs of this student?" And I think that, you know, as Superintendent has talked about as well, we're really looking at what, you know, not just a number, not just a percentage, we're looking at by student what they need. And also thinking that, you know, I know that you guys are, you know, your building's reviewing this and reviewing with the district, and so we're looking at a full year, and so, while I'm, you know, I'm not making excuses, slightly disheartened to look at, say, you know, a school that looks like its numbers have changed, I also am not looking at it with the context of maybe a lot of these referrals were at the beginning of the year, and now, you know, things have changed. That's, that's the building's work to do, and you can see if that building has made progress, which is the superintendent's and your job, I guess, to see if there's progress being made during the school year versus our snapshot at the end of the year, so.
One of the questions I think about is, it's great to hear what we're doing within the schools, and I tend to ask a variant of this question every year. What are we doing to work with partners in the community that could perhaps help these students as well? You know, I think about when I was a rotarian in, in high school, I was part of the STRI program, and I would come in and help mentor a student who had lots of potential. What are we doing in that space? What are we doing to work with our community partners to help us with these students as well?
Do you want me to take that one?
Sure.
Well, I think there's many examples, I mean, the one you gave is a perfect example. That may be one of the interventions, that they'll, they'll connect a student with someone like you who would volunteer to come in, a lot of the work that the community schools are doing, they're, they're bringing in activities that normally don't happen in school, where a kid may connect to that and sees as part of the school. I was actually, last week, presented to a group of Kiwanis, and they were talking about how they, some of them are talking afterwards, they're mentoring students, just like you did. So I think trying to find the ways to connect with kids. Some kids are mentor, you know, they look forward every week, Mark's going to come in and talk to me, and you're going to ask him, you know, "How's your, you know, how are you doing?" And that may be part of the intervention they're using for that particular student, so. And then I think just the work that Amy's doing with the, you know, there's a lot of research that shows that after-school programming has a huge impact, not only in academics, but behavior. We recently got an additional 21st Century grant that's going to connect some of our secondary buildings to some of that, that some of the elementaries are already doing. So I think it's just really trying to find ways to make that connection with students that's going to help them not only behavior-wise, but academically.
And I know a lot of that's going on. What I think would be an extremely good follow-on presentation of this one, is everything you just said more formalized. I know we do a lot with the community. I'd like to see it presented to the board, I'd like the community to see, "Okay, here's all the things we're doing outside of the schools to help the students within the schools." I think that would be-
I know two examples of Longfellow and John Marshall partnering with students. John Marshall kids going to Longfellow to help students, I know of Churchill Hoover and Century doing the same thing. I don't know if others are, but I know of those two that have talked about it, and the JM Longfellow one is, you know, how far, it's a long ways apart, but they've done a lot together of just bringing some of the students over and giving them credit for it, and working with all those students, and it's been great for them.
So essentially, like, I think it was Director Barlow said, it'd be a presentation of the solutions that we're trying to provide to the students as a follow-on to the data at the end of the day.
Director Adamson.
So I realize we're still right in the middle of the data presentation, but it seems like we're on a roll, so it's a good conversation. What I hear when I'm out in the community, especially during election time, when they ask a lot of questions of the candidates, one of the things that I've heard over and over from the community is that there's an impression out there that any drop in office referrals is due to the message that teachers are getting, that we are not to send students to the office to improve our data. And I'm not saying that that's something I'm buying into, but I think I heard it often enough that it's a question that deserves just to be out there and, and addressed. What is your response to that, especially to then the parents who say, "If that's truly what's happening, it's not helping my child learn because the disruption then continues in the classroom." So is there somebody who wants to tackle that for the good of the public?
I can respond to that. I would say, this is under my first year in Rochester Public Schools and at Kellogg, but that's never been a message that we've sent to our staff or our parents. For me, I think the most important thing is to create a picture of what, what the pattern of behavior is, because we can't get to the root of what a behavior issue is unless we have documentation. And the only way we have the documentation is for our teachers to be able to give us the documentation and, you know, identify what the behaviors are. One of the things that we worked on at Kellogg for the last year was looking at our Level I behaviors, and those are classroom-managed behaviors, but if we could see patterns and behaviors of kids having Level I behaviors, then we might be able to prevent Level II behaviors. And so we actually did just the opposite of what you have heard maybe, and that is that we've asked our teachers to document like crazy, like make sure that you're documenting all these things, that we can find patterns of behavior and try to intervene sooner. We, too, have a weekly meeting where we look, but we look more, we focus more on Level I behaviors, and so we might go through a list of kids, and I would say, you know, I'd be able to see at a glance that there are kids that we hadn't seen behaviors from, and right away, I would say, "Get, grab a social worker, grab a counselor, somebody who's got a relationship with us, get connected, and see what's changing." And the only way that we can act on things like that is specifically by gathering more data, not less, and making sure that we're documenting the things that we're seeing. So I would say at Kellogg, I mean, I only have the view for my building, but from that perspective, I don't think that that's accurate.
And I would echo that as well, as far as the message to staff is not to hold on to behaviors until the last minute, or until it's gotten to that point where it's completely unmanageable for you as a classroom teacher, but that we want to intervene earlier rather than later, because then that keeps those behaviors from escalating. And just like Angie shared, is the more data that we have, that's just more information for us on what types of supports a particular student might need. So if we're not getting the information about what's happening with a particular student, then that puts us in a more challenging spot as far as how to put together an appropriate support system for that student. So I ask staff to share as much information as possible, and getting as many adults involved as possible to help support a particular student. So I would say, at least from the perspective of the people at this table, if you have community members coming to you with that message, you know, based on how busy our day is, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's completely accurate.
I would say being honest and transparent. When I was at Jefferson, people would call and say, "I've heard this is happening." Sometimes it was true, and I would explain, "Yeah, this is what's gone on, this is," and sometimes it was totally a false thing, but it's at least having the guts to call your principal or whoever, I know you're busy, and just saying, "Hey, I'm hearing that there was a huge cafeteria food fight." Well, it never really happened. Or, "Yes, this took place, and we got it taken care of," but it's honest and transparent, so some of those things aren't being said, because it is being said. Now that I'm not in the building, I'm here, I hear, I hear it from teachers, I hear it from, you know, you're, especially when they hear I'm doing the data piece, so we're just hiding the data. Like, "No, we're not, we're like-"
I would add, our behavior team actually goes to the classroom if there's a call, instead of the child being sent to the office. So our goal is to always keep children in the classroom, learning where the lessons are happening. So if we can go support, be next to them, help them make good choices, or maybe talk to them briefly in the hallway and get them back in, so they didn't lose all this time coming to the office. We try to do things to keep children in the classroom where the learning takes place. So if they're not sent to the office, no, the teachers aren't sending them to the office, they make a behavior team call to our office. Our office then walkies us, and one of us is there to support the child as soon as possible. If we think the child needs to have a break, we'll take them for a quick walk and get them back. If the child needs to have a little time in the office just to chill for a little bit, that can be a possibility, if the child is doing okay or better when we arrive. And we just kind of hang out and hear the lesson and what's going on, maybe not even be near the child, just to kind of monitor and see how things are, and then based on that, we decide what the next steps are. So the goal isn't to have kids in the office, the goal is to have the kids in the classroom learning.
Director Schluessner.
A quick question. It's great to hear what Sunset Terrace, Bamber Valley, Kellogg, and Jefferson had going on. How often do the schools get together to talk about how each school is tackling this problem? problem?
I, I don't know about the high school a little bit, middle school principals meet at least monthly to kind of collaborate and brainstorm, share ideas and things like that. And specifically, we are having an in-depth conversation about behavior and like our response to behavior and documentation of that tomorrow morning, is kind of a retreat with middle school leaders. So the middle school principals meet at least monthly.
And we do try to, during our monthly leadership meetings, we do, not every month, but do try to build in some times for them to learn from each other, not always on, in the area of discipline, but other areas. So we do try to build some time, because that's, that's what they told us. I'll respond a little bit to Melissa's question. I think when we first went, changed the handbook, there was, we heard that a little bit and I think, and I think back when I was a principal and to be honest with you, I don't even think we had like a handbook like we have here, but you know, if I notice I had a referrals coming from a certain classroom quite frequently and maybe for things that I thought, you know, really that should probably be handled by a teacher, I'd had a conversation with them and say, do I need to help you with classroom management? I mean, what can we do to help you manage your kids? So I think there was a little bit by, I'll say probably a small percentage who, gosh, I used to be able to send Johnny to the office for this and now they want me, I have to deal with it. And so I don't think there was a lot of that, but I think there were some where probably a sense of, you're taking some of my power away because you're not allowing me to, to do that. So, and I think it's just, we, we came up with what Level One, Level Two was by having conversations with administration on what really should be handled by a teacher and what should be handled by the administration. So I think there probably were some who may not agree. And there's times, I don't know if you guys can speak, if you've had this, but I've had other principals say, there's been times a teacher submitted something that really wasn't a Level Two, so they would have a conversation with that teacher and let's talk about why you feel this is a Level Two and shouldn't be a Level One or handled by you versus handled by me. And to me, it's a learning opportunity for, for both sides when they have those conversations. So I think there was a little bit of that, that I used to be able to just send him away or her away for this behavior and now the expectation is, I'm supposed to address it in the classroom. And I appreciate you offering the response to the question, because I think that better equips us to respond in the future and maybe encourage those individuals to reach out at the, to staff, to principals. Okay. Thank you. Carl, I know you've been waiting to move on. Well, no, it's actually, you've moved on.
Actually, it's my turn again. And just so you know, I mean, every one of these buildings has a story. These numbers are children and we've worked closely with them. So I could speak to Bamber Valley and our numbers were a little elevated. And, you know, we had a group of kindergartners that came in that weren't quite ready for kindergarten and it took some supports to get it in place and they struggled for a while and some had more success and then we continued to build success. And we worked with the behavior, the BAM team, the behavior and mental health team to help us with some kiddos that continue to struggle. And so, you know, I can speak to some of that, but every one of these slides has stories behind the children that are there, because that's who they are, they're children who we serve and love and, and want them to be successful. So this is a good one. Elton Hills, they reduced their, their numbers from seventeen, eighteen of two hundred eleven referrals down to eighteen, nineteen of a hundred six referrals. Ninety-one point nine percent of their students had zero referrals. You'll hear over and over again, I want you to hear the zero referral part, because a lot of our children are doing extremely well. And just to kind of have a percentage idea, because the schools are all different sizes. I think that gives you kind of a baseline to. Falwell had seventy-six Level Two referrals this year with eighty-eight point six percent of their students having zero referrals. Franklin also had a drop from a hundred thirty-two referrals last year to a hundred nine referrals this year with ninety-three point three percent of their students with zero referrals. The Montessori at Franklin had a slight increase, six referrals this year, two referrals last year. That is still ninety-nine percent of their students having zero referrals. Gage also fell from five hundred fifty-one last year of referrals to four hundred twenty this year with eighty-three point five percent of their students having zero referrals.
And then I will be picking up with Gibbs. Gibbs having a total of thirty-four Level Two referrals and ninety-seven point four of their students have zero referrals.
If we could, sometimes the, the point is made that student population, and Gibbs would be a school that has a large number of students. And this is an example of where, just because you may have a large number of students does not automatically mean you're going to have a large number of disciplinary related problems. Perhaps in due, due to a large degree, staff and, and the professional development, but is there a way to, similar to Director Atkinson, sometimes community would suggest or think or feel or believe that, well, yeah, the problem is at the school because of the numbers, it's a large school, or, oh, they don't have too many problems because it's a small school. Is there any way you can maybe quantify or offer some type of response to that? I guess what I would say, you know, this is a perfect example, this is one of our larger elementaries and very few office referrals, and then you could look at another larger elementary with dramatically different numbers. And I think, to me, a couple of things, it's not the, the size, the enrollment, I think it's the culture within the building. And then it's also, you have to look at maybe the percentage of, of kids that may be having, have experienced trauma in their life. I mean, it just, there's so many other factors that it may even be the location of where the school is and what part of the city, you know, there's, you know, we have pockets in our city that I would probably say, those students probably have a little more struggles to deal with than maybe a different part of the city. So I think there's so many things that would factor into that, so you can't just say, well, here's a large size. But there are people who say, well, your schools are too big, that's the problem. Well, we can put our two largest elementaries together and they're having totally opposite numbers, so it's really not the number of kids, it's really, to me, it's, it's the makeup of the students that are within that building. And then, like you said, the actual adults within that building, the type of culture that they create and the mindset that they have also contribute to the numbers that, that we see. Thank you.
And then with Hoover, there are a total of thirty-six referrals and ninety-point eight percent of their students had zero referrals. Jefferson was at seventy-three referrals and ninety-four point six percentage, percent of their students have zero. Lincoln K eight with sixteen referrals and ninety-seven point six percent was zero. Longfellow at ten referrals and ninety-seven point nine percent of their students had zero Pinewood is at two hundred and twenty-eight referrals and eighty-one point eight percent of their students had zero referrals. Riverside is at a hundred and forty-one referrals and eighty-nine percent of their students have zero. Sunset Terrace, we are at two hundred and ten referrals and eighty-seven point six percent of our students had zero referrals. And then Washington is at thirty-nine referrals and ninety-three point four percent of their students had zero referrals.
And before we move to the middle school, Director Selinger.
Yeah, so, so I appreciate, you know, you're talking about, these are not, these are students, not numbers, right? But when we, when we look at this data and we have the three, the three bullet points that you've given us there, so you have Washington up, that's great. So is there something that you as building leaders look at? I don't want to say most importantly or by priority, right? Because I think, I, I think when I started looking at this thing, I was, I look at the percentage, right? So ninety-three percent of students have zero referrals, which, you know, that's great. And, and as we spoke about Churchill, like theirs was in the eighties. So to me, that's like, okay, you know, there's something going on there. But is there, is there one piece of those three bullet points that is more important or compelling, concerning for you? You know, is it the overall percentage of, of students without referrals? Is it the average number of referrals? Or is it the number of students who account for those referrals? Is there any weight to those?
To me, when I was at Jefferson, it was the number of refer, number of students for the referrals. So, you know, Jefferson, for example, right now is thirty-four students with seventy-three referrals. I can't recall what it was when I was there, I don't know.
But you're, you want to know about those thirty-four kids or whatever.
Yeah, so those thirty-four kids, how many of those thirty-four kids, is it two of them? How many of those thirty-four kids are ten of them? It's exaggeration, but that's the piece that I had to look at. We're not meeting something with that one student that has eight referrals or not nine referrals, you know? That's, that's the piece that I looked at. And I still look at that part of it when I look at our data right now, that's the piece I hammer on.
And when we look at the referrals too, I'd, I'd add to that. I just, you know, we look at, okay, this kiddo, yep, they have this plan. This student, yep, we have this plan. All right, this student, okay, we need to put more support in place, there's not a plan for that student yet. So it's case by case, student by student, situation by situation, you know, with that.
I, I think percentages are, are nice and make us happy, but I really appreciate that you keep coming back to, these are our students, these are our children, we care about them, how can we support them individually and they're all, they all need something a little different, so thank you.
And, and are we seeing improvement for that particular student? Is the plan that we have in place working or what kind of adjustments do we need to make? Is there someone else that we need to pull in to help support that student? You know, what kind of supports maybe do parents need? Are there community resources that we can pull in for them? And just making sure that we are always keeping our eye on the growth of that particular student.
Director Marvin.
And I really appreciate that you're looking at what each student needs, that huge piece of that. I'm wondering too though, when, when do you look at what might underlie some common issues that kids, especially kids of color have in terms of, I know that, that there continues to be a huge emphasis on staff development, looking at unconscious bias, looking at teaching differently from the way they might have learned to teach, looking at being more culturally aware. But district-wide sort of, when do you look at curriculum, for instance? At, at what voices or, or what stories might be missing from curriculum for these kids who come in and they don't see themselves in so much of our teaching staff? And I know that there's, continues to be a real emphasis on recruiting more teachers of color for all of our schools. But do you look at maybe what's missing in our schools, district-wide, that we need to change so that we do a better job of reflecting and engaging those kids who aren't white? I mean, is there ongoing looking at curriculum and that kind of thing and?
I know there's ongoing, we're conceiving curriculum and instruction. And I'm looking to Brenda with this right now, but I know that there are people within curriculum instruction that are looking at the materials we're using and, and is there something that's not representing the children that we're teaching and how can we add or add to it? I know that they were doing some work around Native American, the history that's going on in second grade and fourth grade and how to make sure it's more culturally relevant. I know our teachers, you know, they're going through some of the CLRT trainings, which hasn't come up really yet, Envoy as well. And, and so we're looking at what things can we do professionally to meet the needs better of the children that are there. So, you know, like the CLRT, so read alouds, let's make sure that it's a, there's a variety of children represented, a variety of skin colors represented, a variety of cultures represented. And then we honor those and that children are beautiful and, you know, and those messages come through and the read alouds and the conversations we have. At my school, we do morning meetings in every one of our classrooms and there's all kinds of work around that and just valuing every person that's there. And honestly, it goes to relationships, which is something else that when we look at the list of kiddos that are struggling more, we instantly go, well, who is that student most connected with? How can we help that child be more connected? You know, because they talk about children need a certain number of people in their lives, like five or seven adults in their life, you know, to really be successful. So how do we make sure that each of our children has important people in their lives? You know, besides the classroom teacher, that there are other people, you know, connecting as well.
Yeah, and I would echo, you know, we, we do look at, at those things and have conversations with staff as things are coming up as far as what's most appropriate and what's most representative of the children that are in front of you right now. And looking at, for example, like our library collection, are we doing everything that we can to make sure that every child in our building is able to find a book that they can identify with when they go into that library? And just make, making sure that we're diversifying that. And we're looking at a couple of things in this coming year as far as how do we pull in student voice for that piece? So that they are having a say in what are some of the things that they have choice of when they're going into the libraries. So that would be one example that I would give for that, yes.
Another gap that's not in here, to be honest with you, that we've been working with at Bamber Valley is our boys have more referrals than our girls. There's a gap that way. And so if you're a boy at Bamber Valley right now, we're working on this, but we, there are more boys referred for Level Ones and Level Twos than there are girls. So we look at, well, why is that? How can we build, build in movement protocols and things that are engaging and interactive to get kids up and moving? Because maybe it's that boys are more active or maybe it's that more social or what, you know, whatever the situation is. But again, knowing your children in front of you and then responding that way and maybe we do some brain breaks or we get them up and moving purposefully within the lesson. Those are all things too.
One of the, I just, I forgot a word that I was looking for. So one of the things I was going to say is, at the secondary level, we spent a lot of time this year looking at ways to build in student voice into lessons. And in their PGP, when teachers set those two, a part of that is them asking student for feedback and so getting that input. And so that's really intentional for people who are on that part of the teacher evaluation cycle. But I also see teachers doing that very regularly in classrooms or even just in conversation with kids, asking for their input. And I know in some of our curriculum writing too, for the highly gifted program, that they are really good about building in very specific time for projects based on student voice and things that they want to learn about. So that's been a really big push for us from the CLR perspective. All right, middle school data. I'll remind you, when you start looking at percentages, these are students that are developing. I always say like, just remember their frontal lobes and amygdalas are rapidly changing at this age group. So, Fredell had seventeen referrals, ninety-seven percent of their students with zero referrals. And then in the next three, we'll consider these the big middle schools. You'll see some differences in our numbers and we have identified some things that we maybe will look at later in terms of how we report and document our Level Twos so that we're a little bit more comparable. John Adams had eight hundred fifty-nine referrals from two hundred six students. That left eighty-one point seven percent of students in that building without referrals this year. At Kellogg, we had three hundred ninety-nine referrals coming from a hundred and seventy-one students, eighty-three point six percent with zero referrals. And then at John, at Willow Creek, four hundred fifty-four referrals coming from a hundred and eighty-six students, which was eighty-two point eight percent with zero referrals. So what I would tell you is that even though you look at the numbers of referrals and they seem pretty dramatically different between them, if you look at the percentage of students that are not, not earning Level Two referrals, that that's pretty consistent. And I think that across the nation, you would see that the number of students earning zero referrals in a middle school setting is different, quite different from an elementary or a secondary building. So I felt encouraged as a middle school leader, especially as a first-year leader here in the district, that, that that piece of it was important to me. So when you'd ask the question like, what are you looking at? I like to see like, how does it compare? Because even though I sometimes have time to go site visit and collaborate with those principals, I'm not in their buildings and so it's, it's good to be able to learn, grow and ask questions from the things that they're doing.
I had one more thing about middle schools before, because you don't have this data, but their suspension data, which I like to look at, is pretty much the same. So if you look at, and I don't want to pit a school against another school, we've got John Adams, eight hundred fifty-nine Level Twos, they have the least amount of suspensions. So when I talked earlier about John- So when I talked earlier about John Adams has a plan of what, what they're doing, that's why some of these numbers are high for them, their suspensions are lower than others. So keep that in mind. Their suspensions for the three large middle schools are pretty close to the same compared to their referrals.
And before we move to the high schools, Chair is going to entertain a five-minute break and give everyone an opportunity to stretch, get some water, go to the bathroom. Recession at seven thirteen. Or reconvene at seven twenty PM.
All right, so the secondary buildings are the next buildings to talk about. And Century had sixty-six referrals coming from fifty-four students. A low average, actually the same average as Mayo High School, and that's one point two referrals per student that had received them. Ninety-six percent of their students had no referrals. John Marshall had two hundred fifty-one referrals, ninety-one percent of their students having zero referrals. And then Mayo, a hundred and twelve referrals, again, that same one point, one point two average per student, and then ninety-five percent with no referrals.
Director Sealing.
So we see when we look at the overall pictures, that most of our referrals are coming from our middle school students, and as you said, their brains are developing. So are we, are we hopeful that these, I'm, I'm sure we're hopeful, let's be hopeful, that our efforts are really going to scaffold? And perhaps at some point, we will maybe see some lessening, not just in our middle school students, because they're in our middle school buildings, but because of the work we're doing at the elementary. Do, do you work on anything transitionally for students? Or, you know, as they maybe transition from fifth to sixth, between buildings, anything like that to kind of?
So glad you asked.
Okay.
So at Kellogg, we started a club this year that we're calling the Comet Crew. So we opened it up to all of our current sixth and seventh graders to apply to be mentors to our incoming sixth graders. And so we have about sixty-five kids who applied and are part of this program. We had a welcome to Comet Crew celebration this spring and got together and did some team-building activities. And of the sixty-some kids, I think fifty of them came back during middle school prep and volunteered, got a ride in and hung out at middle school prep with kids, played some team-building activities, did scavenger hunt throughout the building. I think that, that transition time is so critical for us, that we make sure that kids are feeling comfortable before they get there, and that they kind of have the lay of the land, they know who they can go to for support. And so we've got that started. Those students will also be at our open house, they'll be at the first day of school. We got them bright green T-shirts that say Comet Crew, so they'll stand out, and the sixth graders will know that they have some kids to turn to for help. And then we also today had our first popsicles with the principals and just invited our sixth graders, just come and hang out, play Gaga Ball. We took a tour of the building, had popsicles, played some four-square, and just, we're trying as many ways that we can to get students in the building a number of times before the year begins, just so that that transition is a little bit easier. I love that our parents are joining for that too, because they, you know, they're curious and familiar, and it's, I mean, that transition is probably scarier for parents than it is for kids in many ways. So, so that has been one of the things that we've put in place. And then we've also restructured the location of our social workers and created a student support service center for our students this year with a focus room, because when I'm having a bad day, I sometimes need a place to go and take a break. And I have that ability to do that as an adult. The kids sometimes have a hard time figuring out what that looks like. So we see it as avoidance, like running down the hall, hiding under the stair while skipping class, and we're misperceiving what they're doing. And so we want to be able to teach kids what the coping skills would look like for them to be able to be successful and get back on track. And so we have that in place for the coming year. We have two social workers and three counselors that are just going to knock it out of the park, so.
Yeah, I would also add too, that this coming school year, we're going to start the middle school right fit program. It, it really, you know, we found that some elementary students, the traditional way of teaching elementary didn't work, so we have a elementary right fit at Riverside. So we're excited to do the same thing at the middle school level. We'll be leasing two classrooms at the Boys and Girls Club for that program right now. And some of the students have already been identified. The principals last spring started working with teachers and families to, here's an option for your student that might be a better fit. So we think that might be another way that might help address that middle school level.
And these will be middle school kids from throughout the district?
Yes.
Need that additional support? Okay.
And before we move to referrals to law enforcement, I just want to be clear, are setting three, four factored into this data of level two?
Yes. Thank you.
And just before we get into referrals to law enforcement, just a reminder, referrals to law enforcement was part of the OCR agreement, but we're continuing to report that as, I believe at the study session last year, you asked us to do the same reporting that we did this spring, so this, or this summer. So this is a, this is not part of the MBHR agreement.
So referral to law enforcement is, as Carl said earlier, we had some data entry issues that we had to work through. So I'm going to turn, because my handwriting is so poor that I wrote on here, so my numbers aren't exactly, yep, I got it right. So we have a hundred eighty-nine referrals to law enforcement for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Hundred fifty-six students accounted for those, that's less than one percent of our students. Keep that in mind, less than one percent of our students had referrals to law enforcement. Four in the elementary and a hundred and, a hundred eighty-five in the secondary. Notice the reasons being interruption for learning, alcohol, drugs, tobacco, paraphilia, and fighting and theft are kind of our main reasons between those. If you look at, you'll have four referrals for elementary of interruption to learning, what's going on? Could be because a kid ran from the building, could be because kids, so we had a police response that way, those type of things. We're going to work with our elementary buildings a little bit on some of those things to hopefully have a better understanding of why they're calling the police in some of those matters.
Yeah, before you go on, I, I do want to call out, just because we refer students to law enforcement, SRO doesn't mean there's charges. It's kind of a, I'm talking to Scott, it's kind of like a multi-step process. We may refer a student to an SRO, the SRO will determine if there needs to be charges filed, and then ultimately, it's either the city or county attorney decides referrals that the police made, do they, are they really going to follow through and, and charge the person for that? So it doesn't mean a hundred and fifty-six students, charges were filed against them, they were just referred to the law enforcement. So would it also be true then that all one hundred and fifty-six students were, these were all level two infractions?
Yes. Eighteen, nineteen, referral to law enforcement, you see it broken down by race, just a quick little thing here. I mean, we're still very disproportionate overall. We have sixty-five percent of our minority students has referred to law enforcement compared to our one hundred eighty-nine total. Broken down by schools, you see John Adams with fifty-one referrals to law enforcement, thirty-six of those were for fighting. Willow Creek, four, with two referred for fighting. Sorry, Carl. Fast forward here. Kellogg had twenty with a variety. They have the most, I guess, as far as the most variety in the whole piece. That was rather interesting. Fredell with eight and four for alcohol, drug. Century, eight, and their highest physical occupation with weapon is the other piece within that. John Marshall had ten, and their highest was fighting. Mayo, sixty-six, and theirs was alcohol, drug, paraphilia, the baby piece. Continue efforts, still staff development, as we talked about a little bit earlier with some of the Dr. Holly things, Envoy, historical trauma, CRL, social emotional learning or SEL, Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center, regular means between building and office downstream, secondary, the office to review data. That's where you think we talked about earlier, that could be some of that progress of how the students are doing. So if we've got somebody that has fourteen referrals, that's notice, we can have that conversation of, they went from fourteen referrals to, or level twos to three in April. That, that's where that, that conversation is going to be. Ongoing collaboration during leadership and building leadership meetings, and then district equity leadership team has been created through special ed.
Director Marvin.
Especially when it comes to kids with more profound number of referrals or with police referrals, do you kind of correlate the number of students, those students, is there any correlation between kids with mental health problems and the kids who are either more likely to get into drugs and alcohol and violence and that type of thing? Do you see that? Do you do any kind of number crunching that way?
My own personal opinion would be yes, I don't have any numbers to back that up. But no, I don't have any numbers for that, but yeah, my personal opinion, I agree with you, yes.
Okay.
So of the one hundred eighty-nine referrals to law enforcement, is there any way to account for the referrals that occurred at the individual schools? I, I know you've identified the referrals here, but when we went through the general presentation of referrals, we were able to identify a number of sixty-four students accounted for X amount. So of those students who are?
We need to be careful of that piece, because, you know, if you, for example, Willow Creek with four students, we could get some identifying pieces going on. I thi, I think that's what you're asking me?
Well, I'm curious if there's any direct correlation between those who are frequently found being referred to?
Level twos.
Level twos.
Okay.
Also then being referred to law enforcement.
I would say, I don't know that our twenty, all of them off the top of my head, but I know a number of them off the top of my head, and they would be in, on the high end of the, of their level two referrals, absolutely.
And then secondly, I do know that the, and I appreciate Carl establishing that OCR initially required this reporting out, but, and that the district has made a significant commitment to have school resource officers. I think it is important for us as a board, district community, to be aware of the actions which are undertaken in our public schools by, at the request of our staff. And, but I know that you guys are not responsible for obtaining or being aware of any of the legal dispositions, as Superintendent Munoz had referenced earlier. So is it possible, Superintendent Munoz, to request from Chief Franklin or the SRO leadership that type of information to be a part of their routine reporting back to us? I think the, the board, well, I certainly as a member of the board, would appreciate knowing the disposition of, of those referrals.
We talked about that, and really, only thing that we really have access to is we could correlate our numbers with, let's say, high school A had fifty referrals to the SRO. The SRO could say, out of those fifty, I sent ten forward. What we don't know is, what we can't connect is either what happened after that, or if SRO was busy, so they called street patrol. We don't, we can't get access to that, and a lot of times, because these kids are minor, even when they do the police stuff to the media, if they're a minor, they do not disclose who it was. So we could talk to SRO and say, let's check numbers and see, the ones that were sent to you, how many you moved forward, but we wouldn't be able to know which one. At least from that level to the next level, but beyond that. I, I think it would, it would be, I think we, last year, or I think it was, we even, somebody did a data privacy request to the law enforcement for the number of calls to the schools, but that was, could it be, could be, I mean, could be anytime, and it just says, yeah, law enforcement was called to John Marshall at two AM Saturday. I mean, it wasn't correlated to our referrals to SRO, so. But we could check what we send, and then what SRO could say, well, we, of the, whatever, we, I recommended X number.
And then finally, as relates to law enforcement, so where does truancy come into play? It's not a, I mean, often, is truancy a referral to law enforcement, or is that social, how does that?
Couple of years ago?
Go ahead.
One of the changes we made to the behavior handbook and practices at the building, is buildings were automatically making a level two referral for so many absences, and we did say, that is something we don't want to be part of the referral process.
Guys, that's education or the collect by the law, and we didn't want to be part of that.
Director Sealing.
Yeah, so just to, to clarify on the referrals to law enforcement, and I'm, I'm a big believer in example scenarios. So if, if you would have one, that would be greatly appreciated by me. But also just reminding us, confirming, reminding that our SROs do not discipline our students, they're not making any choices about what happens to our students. And that was, I think, something we worked really hard on messaging. So in, you know, in, in an example of, you know, we talk about alcohol, drugs, or whatever, how, how would that get, you know, how, how would, how would that scenario play out that it would get referred to law enforcement?
Student had marijuana on them.
Okay.
It would get referred to law enforcement.
Okay, so you would, you would say, SRO, Officer Kelly, whatever, we have this student, they were found with a drug on them, and they would? But the school would still maybe do a suspension or other consequence, because it's a behavior at school, but then it's pushed off, and often to the system it goes. And then to Superintendent's point, we may not know if it got to a level of being a chargeable offense or whatever, which I think they also spoke about at the, the presentation on vaping, et cetera, at the, at Willow Creek. Thank you.
And that's another example, if you wouldn't mind, say, a, the fighting. Is law enforcement involved?
I, I would say not in every fight. I, I know even when I was administrator, this is where it comes a little gray, the severity of the fight. You know, if it was, like, a couple of kids pushing and shoving, fighting, I was able to get it resolved, and, and I would handle it, just typically with a suspension. I think it has to do with the severity of the, of the fighting, so it's not automatic, two kids were fighting, and, I mean, we have little elementary kids that may technically get into it out at the playground, and, I mean, so that's where it's tough to say, fight, all fights are automatically referring.
No, I meant more so, a number of students get involved in an incident, staff can't potentially control it, school resource officers are contacted. Do scenarios like that occur, or?
Yes.
And, okay, thank you.
Yep. And we picked out, you know, we, after that would happen, we would evaluate what took place and how to help, so when those students come back, we're able to help make sure the school's safe. Thank you.
This was a late add to Board docs, but we are to the point at the end of this month where we have to report our end of the year data to Minnesota Department of Human Rights. So as I think we showed you at around the end of first semester, when our mid-year report was due, this is what the report will look like. I think we had all our, so we have a, a column of suspensions, and those are out-of-school suspensions and then expulsions for the year, and by school, the number. And we, I think we were at three expulsions a semester, so we didn't add any after that. And then it goes down into offense category for each suspension and expulsion.
And I will remind the board that the three expulsions for alcohol, drug, and tobacco, that's for distribution, possession is not, we do not expel kids for possession, but we do for distribution.
Out-of-school suspensions and expulsions by race. And the last required component of the reporting is susp- And the last required component of the reporting is suspensions and expulsions by disability status.
Any additional questions regarding discipline data? Thank you.
Thank you for giving us your time during the summer when you were off duty. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Five point zero two, Minnesota Department of Human Rights update. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I gotta try to find it on here without my glasses, but there it is. You know what? I'm not gonna be able to do that one. I'm gonna have to stand there.
Because it's a, not a political...
It's good for you to stand up a little bit.
Carl, can you do it?
All right. I'll try to do it from here. So this is just the second report that we're making to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights. Unfortunately, we still have not received feedback from our first submission, so we just assumed then what we presented, sent in, must be okay, so we just followed the same format. This is the information there, we shared our universal goals, our core beliefs in there, but then here's where we actually get into the plan. And what we've done is, what we actually submitted to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights was just the darker print. What we provided for you here in the lighter print is what was submitted first semester previously. So in the area of positive school climate, we did use a Survey Monkey to get feedback from parents, staff, and students on the student handbook. And what's, the three points there are, is probably the most common theme or feedback we received from that survey, is many of them asked, is why are we wasting the money making printed copies for every student? And then there was suggestion that we should have, if you remember, in the back of the handbook, the parents could sign it, and then submit the paper to their office, they're saying, why don't you allow them to do that electronically? So we've added that feature this coming school year, and then they want a more searchable version online. So what we're doing this year is that is gonna be online, and we are mailing one copy per family. We're not giving every student one at the beginning of the school year like we've done in the past, based on the feedback that we receive, but we will mail one to each, each household. On the area of PBAES, we'll continue with the implementation with the support from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and then for the, this coming school year, the PBAES leadership team meeting will occur at site, site, you know, I shared with you earlier that the PBAES at each site gets together regularly, and Jackie's office will be supporting them this, this school year. In the area of positive staff and student relationships, we'll continue the professional development that we reported in the first semester, we continued that work with Dr. Shrocky Holly, and then we did share with them that we have been working with Dr. Bill Daggett on positive climate and culture, and we'll continue that work even into the next school year. We are fortunate that, since we are part of the Innovative Transformational Leadership Network, we get, Dr. Daggett will be our keynote for our back-to-school at no charge to the district, so he will be presenting twice on that day, because we can't get everybody in the auditorium at one time, so he'll do two separate sessions. This way, all the staff have the opportunity to hear what leadership has already heard. Police liaison officers, we just reported the dates here that Scott met with the resource officers. We did note that we, they now want to be called school resource officers, so we changed the name here to school resource officers instead of police liaisons. CLRT, we continued the integration of that. Each building had a cohort, and Dr. Holly worked with them, and then some of his coaches came in and did classroom observations and gave teachers feedback on the work that he's been doing with them. And then we did create a district equity leadership team to coordinate and lead equity efforts throughout the district. In the order, area of professional development, as I mentioned earlier, we continued doing the CLR, Building Leadership Coaching Conversations, professional development. Dr. Holly convened, will convene, and we're, this is something I'm really excited about this coming school year, is that he's going to work with a group of students at the high school level as well to help us in that work. I think that's even at no charge, right? So we're pretty fortunate for that. Develop building cohorts, receive an extra training. Each site continues to, they're having the cohorts continue to work with Dr. Holly, and they're also doing, you'll hear the word binder study, they're doing, kinda like a book study, but it's a binder created by Dr. Holly. And then numerous teachers, as I mentioned earlier, have been receiving outside coaching from Dr. Holly and some of his experts. Ongoing internal coaching, continue training with our instructional coaches led by our Equity Implementation Associate. She's been working with instructional coaches, and she does a really nice job in the area of equity, and she'll continue to do that this coming school year. Crisis prevention and intervention strategy training, CPI training will be offered in the fall and throughout the school year. Envoy, we, even though it's kind of repetition of what we said in the first semester, but all, beginning of the year, all staff, K-8 certified staff were trained, and then we will train any new teachers that we hire for next school year will be, receive the training as well. Extended envoy for special education staff, individual sites will determine additional envoy, professional development focused on the small group of strategies in the area of special education. Dr. Treyer, he's on schedule again for our back-to-school, so he'll be one of the sessions that will be available to staff next back-to-school week. Collaboration with Dr. Holly and PBAES, we have completed this action. He, Dr. Holly, worked with PB, District PBAES Leadership Team, teachers and administrators, and that training has completed, so we just said that we have completed that requirement. Training on student handbook, the district staff will provide this training during August leadership meeting, and then staff and students will be trained on the handbook during the months of September. Typically, the secondary buildings use their advisory time to, to go over the handbook with students. Site departments' development equity action plans, all sites would develop, I kinda mentioned that earlier tonight, that during the data retreat, they'll be looking at behavior and academic and all the data, and then working on their school improvement plans in the area of student behavior, academics, and perception data. Okay, behavior interventions, consistent office referrals, forums, we're gonna continue to use that forum, rest of this, this past semester we did, and, and at this time, we don't anticipate any changes for that forum for next school year. Clear consistent level one and level two behaviors, we did not change the handbook during the second semester, so we kept that, and like I said, we did review level one and level two behaviors with leadership, and one of the things I was gonna mention during our conversation, and I forgot to, one of the conversations I wanna have with leadership in our August meeting is that the second most frequent reason for referrals was disruption, so I wanna have a conversation, so we're all on the same page in what that means, and I, I'm not for sure if we're there on that one, and since it's one that for several years happens to be one of our top three reasons, let's make sure we're all on the same page on what that means. So that's the conversation I wanna have with them in August. Standardization of responsive behaviors, guidelines have been developed, Jackie worked with a group of administrators and talked about that, and they looked at, we called them scenarios, but they were actually things that happened, and we just talked about, so how would you handle this, and let's try to be more consistent on the, the consequences or how we handle this particular behavior across the district. District-wide oversight of suspensions, now that Afalavi has taken administrative position, we are going to take that responsibility over, and the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education will maintain the records of suspension and have those conversations with building administration. Oversight of referrals to law enforcement, again, the Office of Elementary and Secondary Education will continue to review referrals as, as Chris mentioned tonight. Implementation of Rochester Alternative Program, we did mention here that we discontinued that program the second semester because we found it was not effective, and that we did call attention that we're gonna be starting the middle school right fit this coming school year. Analyzing data concerning exclusion, suspension, and expulsions, we continued that effort in, into the second semester, and then we identified, again, the three, the most reasons for suspensions, which was very consistent, if you look down here, it was pretty close to the same thing. Discipline supervisor, as I mentioned, we are now having that responsibility will be taken over by Jackie's department. Inclusion of behavior goals or site improvement plans, as I mentioned earlier, at, at the data retreat, they will be looking at their, their data and incorporate that in, in their site improvement plans. Again, continued the efforts from the January report, and to be honest with you, I, this is something that I really enjoy, meeting with the building, their leadership team, which is the administration and some teachers, to have them go over their, their plans, why, you know, what data they looked at to come up with the goals that they were created, and, and since we typically did those January, February, they would give us an update on the progress that they made on those particular goals, and we'll continue that practice again this coming school year. Student School Board monthly meetings, we just mentioned that we continued to have those monthly meetings during, during the second semester. Same thing with listening posts, we continue that. Student listening posts, listening sessions during the school year by the superintendent cabinet will be at least once a year, once during the school year next year, whereas the building administration will be having them on a more regular basis. Survey to gather feedback on the plan, this occurred in the spring of 2019, and will occur again the spring of 2020. Something new that we added, student, under the student perception data, we signed an agreement or contract with Panorama, and we did administer that survey to students this past spring, but next school year, we will do it twice a year, and it's, it's more of giving, more an area of culture of the building, giving feedback to the adults on their perception of the culture of, of the school. Community input, opportunity to provide input on the plans, progress through superintendent listening posts, we said we're gonna continue that. Ten staff meetings, the superintendent, and more of the cabinet than the superintendent, but attended a staff meeting and went over the plan, and then got feedback from staff on the plan during those presentations. So that's our update that we submitted, or in the process of submitting, it's all to our legal counsel, and then the legal counsel will submit it to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights for the district. Any questions for me?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Munoz. Five point zero three, superintendents' update, 2011, 2019, and year in review, 2018, 2019.
Okay, I'm gonna have to grab my other piece of paper. Since I'm an old Thursday, I like paper copies, and when technology doesn't work, I'm gonna do that. All right. Now, this is, to be honest with you, we used to do this, and then we stopped a couple years ago. I don't, to be honest, we don't recall why we stopped, but my understanding, I'm not through watching all of the study session yet, I've gotten through an hour and twenty-some minutes of it, but, and maybe I misunderstood, but I thought it was requested at that time for us to come back to doing this, so we're doing it. But interesting, typically, superintendents do this, like, after they retire and they're done, they just kinda reflect on how things went, but one of the cabinet members said, well, let, let's just, let's brainstorm, what's, things that have happened since you came in 2011. So, and I'll be honest with you, I was like, oh, gosh, we've accomplished, we, I wanna make sure I say we, them, you, all of our staff, we've accomplished a lot in the last eight years, so I'm gonna try to highlight as many of these as I can. We have all-day kindergarten district-wide, which we didn't have in the past. We've added two early learning schools, Mighty Oaks and Hoover. We've sold Golden Hills Learning Center. We opened up and repurchased the Market Square building and turned that into a really nice ALC building. We've expanded our partnership with Mayo Clinic, and they are now, have taken over our clinic at ALC and providing the physicians at no charge to the district. We've had a, a greater focus on safety and security, not all of our schools, but many of our schools have secured entrance. We have the Raptor program, when people come in and visit and volunteer, they'll run through that, and we have a crisis professional development training we provided. We've built, and going on, just finished our third full year of CTEC, which provides opportunities for about 1,800 students every year. We've increased our graduation rate, not only, I guess what I'm most proud of in that area is not so much that every year we've increased, but if you look at our subgroups, our students of color within, over that period of time, they have shown a substantial increase. I think when we went over the results of the graduation, when we look at our blacks, Hispanics, and special ed, we're far exceed the state average in those different categories. We've improved our partnerships in the community with the, the police department, Mayo Clinic, Homestead County, City of Rochester, Rowan State University, and Prairie Care. We've increased the technology usage across the district, and I've had many staff, veteran staff, I won't say old staff, but veteran staff, say that the district in the last few years has had more emphasis on equity than they've ever had since they've been in, in the system, so that's something that we're really proud of. Not only has the focus been there, but we've added the Equity Specialist, the American Indian Liaison, and we have a district-wide Equity Leadership Team. We've provided training and cultural responsive classrooms, envoy, and we've completed all the components of a OCR agreement, which I think is quite an accomplishment. We purchased the former People's Co-op building and turned that into our Facility Service Center. We developed and become a state model for community school partnerships at the ALC, Gage and Riverside Elementary. We've started the Project Search Program, which is for our students with disabilities, where they do a full year of internship at Mayo Clinic, and I do believe all of the students that have done, graduated through that program over the years, have seeked or have employment. We were part of instrumental in passing of the T-21, the county passed the T-21 law, which is something that we really helped in partnership with Homestead Public Health and Mayo Clinic to really promote that. We're a very active partner in the cradle of the career, many of our staff and board members are part of that leadership table. We've increased the mental health programming services, two of our schools have been identified as National Blue Ribbon Schools. Our Hawthorne Education Center received the Harvard's 2017 innova- Our Hawthorne Education Center received the Harvard's 2017 Innovation in American Government Award. We've received the Golden Achievement Award from the National School Public Relations Association for our future generations and our rebrand that we did. If you remember, we rebranded our district and the community. Actually, that was a competition to select our logo that's on the back of the wall there. And we've implemented a new ADA compliant website this year. And we have refinanced 2009 debt that we've had and resolved in savings for the district. We've implemented an Apex Program at the ALC. This coming year, we'll launch Incubator EDU, which will be the first entrepreneur program in the state of Minnesota. We've had the Elementary Right Fit Program and we'll be doing the Middle School Right Fit. We've created the strategic plan and also updated the strategic plan and created a graduate profile with the help of our stakeholders. And we have implemented district-wide Spanish immersion program. So, you know, I think a lot of times we get really busy in our work and don't take time to reflect on all the great things that we as a system have accomplished for our students. And it's when you do things like this that you really take the time and stop and think about all the great things that we have done. And and all of you are a big part of that because a lot of that you have to give us permission to do and and support that along the way. So now we'll get into just, sorry, I should have, I've just rambled and didn't move the slide or should have had you drive for me. All right, so now we're going to talk about just this past school year. In the area of Business Services, we've had a clean audit with an unmodified opinion this past year. Structurally balanced general fund from FY '18, '19, and '20. General Fund has stayed above the board policy for six percent. We have added a high deductible health plan with an HRA or an HSA option. And if you need more clarification on that, Don, John could explain it because he did that yesterday at our meeting we were at. We reduced printing and copying numbers, which saves us money. And we, with our partnership with Centurgistics, we have saved money because of energy conservation. In the area of CNI, when we talk about CTEC expansion, all ninth-grade students that visit CTEC in November, they get a tour. Counselors have open house where all middle school and high school counselors are invited to CTEC in October to hear about the different type of opportunities for students that are there so they can, when they're talking to students, they're familiar with what's available for them. We have an elementary collaboration with Gage and Bishop students who have spent time at CTEC to learn about the different career opportunities that are available even at the elementary age. We have career trees. We're developed highlighting entry level, technical, and advanced degree career options. And then this coming fall, we're in partnership with the firefighters, this is Scott's favorite, firefighters. We have an online hands-on course where students can be prepared to take that firefighter's test. So that's a new opportunity for our students. And then professional literacy option is where students this coming school year, oh, excuse me, the fall of 2020, where they can get an English credit along with one of the courses out at CTEC. You've heard a little bit about grading for learning. We've had fifty people on a task force meeting monthly to look at research-based grading practices in K-12 and starting the fall of 2020 with professional development occurring at district and building levels. I mentioned earlier that will be the first cohort at Incubator EDU coming on this fall. CNI also supported the study of fine arts curriculum, grades K through 12. Hired two elementary reading coaches to support teachers with core instruction and provided voice and choice and professional development for staff. Also, they've involved students, and this is something that's really cool, that we had students working with hand-in-hand with teachers to update our secondary health class curriculum. So as, you know, we had, some of them, I think a lot of them were from the Student School Board. They were telling us that it needs work and they volunteered to help us do that. So we had students working with our teachers. We also had mental health professionals from Homestead County and Mayo Clinic also working with us to do that. We had one hundred and fifty-one teachers receive external coaching through Dr. Holly's coaching staff. We provided support and new resources for for math, K through 11, and we continue to support the English Language Learners High School redesign process. So they have been working with that department. We established a committee on twice exceptional students. That's, these are students who are gifted and have one or more disabilities. So we have a committee working on that. We collaborated with Equity Specialist, American Indian Liaisons, and bilinguals, sharing information about opportunities for students and information nights for families. Just so when they're interacting with families, they're better informed on what's going on in our system. This year, they supported the Avid Program, which was at John Adams in Willow Creek. And then they're in the process of making challenging math projects and enrichments ready available at the elementary teachers for their classrooms. In the area of community education. Preschool served two hundred and sixty-four young learners. Adult literacy at Hawthorne served over sixteen, almost seventeen hundred adults in basic skills, high school diploma, GED, college prep, or citizenship prep. And then the Rochester Family Literacy provided two generational support for learning for forty-nine children ages zero to five and thirty, which made up of thirty-seven families. And then they opened up this year, we opened up the Hoover Learning School. Also, community education, fostering growth. I mentioned this earlier tonight, the Twenty First Century Community Learning Grant, and that identifies the schools that were part of that. And then I think what's really cool is not just what's provided in our school buildings, but we have some community groups that are getting funding to provide opportunities. One of those is a Somali group and I, three of them, and then we're adding an additional one for the new grant. So it's not just what we're providing in our schools, but what our community partners are providing at at their sites. School Age Childcare SAC served twenty, over twenty-two hundred children, including non-school days and nine, yes, nine, snow days. Youth enrichment, they provided over twelve thousand children and youth with opportunities through youth enrichment. And then also applied for a new Twenty First Century Grant, which I mentioned earlier that we did receive. So now a couple of the high schools and ALC will be able to provide, have some funding to provide after-school programming for their students. Okay, in the area of adult enrichment, provided over nine thousand experiences for adult community members in Rochester. Adults with exceptional abilities offered over five thousand opportunities for new learning. And then Parents Are Important to Rochester, the PAIR Program. We offered three hundred and fifty-nine community families the opportunity to learn new approaches, discuss concerns, and connect with other families. And then we also partnered with Mayo Clinic Healthy Living Program. In the area of communication and marketing, telling our story through, we had three hundred and fifty-three digital news stories, two hundred and, we created two hundred and seven video productions, including the use of drones. We do have a drone that flies around, takes video footage for us. And then through monthly newsletters and over ten thousand social media followers can follow the district through social media. We've optimized our website presence by creating twenty-seven new websites for our district, twenty-four PTSA sites, three Booster Club sites. And additionally, on our journey towards American with Disabilities, ADA compliance, we've reduced the number of pages from nineteen thousand with more than five thousand PDFs to two thousand pages. And we're saving five hundred, we saved five hundred trees this year, which equates to over, well, there's the number, that's over four million sheets of paper for the school year because we use Peachjar for our newsletters now. And then we ran Districts First. Hopefully y'all got a chance to see it, thirty-second TV commercial. So hopefully we'll have more of those to come in the future. In the area of technology, the Tech Department is supporting employees through over twenty-nine thousand help desk tickets this year. They support our students with mobile devices, over almost eleven thousand iPads and twenty-six hundred Chromebooks. And we converted twenty-eight labs to mobile devices in carts. And this was at the request of building administrators. Instead of having a desktop in a lab, they have mobile devices. As a warranty authorized repair facility for HP, they repaired the hundred and seventy-six laptops, eighty-three desktops, and seven hundred and thirty-eight tablets and iPads. Software enhancements with students, online enrollment module in Skyward. And then they did a lot of work on the gender identity changes online process created in Skyward, informed the incident response team. And then we have an RPS tip line that could be, anyone can report something to the district. In the area of elementary and secondary education, focus on instructional leadership. Jackie's been working with leaders to develop professional goals for the year and working with them around the four dimensions of instructional leadership. And that's through, she was part of the AAS Day cohort for two years on how to supervise and support building principals. So what she learned from there, which was the four dimensions of instructional leadership, she incorporated with our building administrators. Collaboration among leaders, the use of teamwork approach to share our insights and support. I kind of mentioned that earlier, that we do try to provide opportunities during our monthly administrative meetings where they can learn from each other and not just us doing all of that. And then I think somebody mentioned this earlier, no, actually it was something that came up on the study session when I was watching it this afternoon. Instructional rounds, in the in the cabinet notes, they always comment about what they saw when they go through the instructional round, Jackie and Brenda and Carla, and then other buildings from, will go along with to see another building. They did fifty-nine visits and those visits are three hours at a time. It's not just in and out, it's three hours at a time at that school. And they visited three hundred and fifteen classrooms. And then they had follow-up time to debrief and work with the leadership team at that particular site. In the area of district-wide option enrollment, one of the things that we we realized that in our district-wide schools, if a student would, let's say, move out of town mid-year, that spot might not have always been filled. So now Jackie's department is monitoring that. If a space opens up, we reach, pull out a list and and make that spot available to somebody. I I'm assuming just the building just got so busy and didn't think about filling that spot, but she's created a system to monitor that and fill those spots when they open. Also along with that is, one of the things that we heard during the task force work, and I think Mark, you remember this, the the task force asked, well, why are the class sizes and numbers different at their district-wide schools compared to the non-district-wide? And Jackie really made an effort this year to get those numbers closer to the other schools as far as enrollment. Exceptional attendance, they, the process was revised to better align with school board policy. And then secondary enrollment support, a process to coordinate and guide mid-quarter enrollment of secondary students in collaboration with the school sites. We really didn't have a student from another town moved in mid-year and like, oh, how do we handle that? So they really worked with administrators to come up with a better process for that.
Quick note, if you don't mind mine.
Yes.
Is I noticed during our discipline data updates, the district-wide option numbers more closely reflect student body as a whole as well, which was something that I know the district had worked on.
Yes.
Because it wasn't necessarily representative, but by the numbers reported, it looks representative to me.
Yeah, I think a lot of that, I think when, a few years ago, when the district took over the lottery system for all schools, I think that really helped a lot with that. Also, in the elementary and secondary education, as far as area behavior support, we have, as I mentioned earlier, we have a district data team, a group of leaders from all levels review student discipline data, identify trends from a district level and brainstorm strategies to address that. And then the violation guidelines, she did get a group of administrators, principals and assistant principals together to look at, can we better align our consequences for, you know, if this behavior happens in building A and building B, can the consequences be more aligned versus not? So that's, they spent some time looking at that. In HR, Carl initiated a staff of color resource group, and I think Don had an opportunity to visit with that group and we're really, we think the first year was kind of, let's figure things out, but we're looking forward to more out of that group in the coming year. They onboarded three hundred and sixty-four new employees during the school year, and then I'm not going to go over, but you see the breakdown of the different groups. Started regular meetings with paraprofessional unions. It's always been meeting regularly with the teachers' union and then just started meeting with the paraprofessionals on a regular basis. And then additional standardization of staffing process for secondary schools. This was the second year that we did that. Before, we had a standardization, they would just come in and say, here's, we got twenty kids signing for this, I need a, this point two of a teacher. And we really started looking at, which I think we shared a little bit with you, you know, a larger elementary gets a principal and an assistant principal, and a smaller elementary only gets a standard allocation as one administrator. So we really tried to to work on that and Carl's department did that. And then annual evaluation to paraprofessionals. Unfortunately, hate to admit, but we didn't have a tool to evaluate paraprofessionals. So Carl's office accreted that for the district. In area of student services, in area partnerships, a new partnership with Mayo Clinic. Not only are they providing the physicians at the clinic, they also providing a district medical director. And with that person is an expert who, if our nurses have a question, they can reach out to this person and get some guidance on some of the really challenging things that they have to deal with as a school nurse. We also have city span, United Way Partnership. This is a database sharing tool and we're, because of our partnership with United Way, we're going to start using that to measure success with our community partners. Results-based accountability, three community school site facilitators and partnership specialists in conjunction with the Cradle of the Career staff were trained in that results-based system. And then HRA and Regional Continuum of Care, partnered with the Housing Redevelopment Authority and Regional Continuum of Care to support programs for students in transition. In the areas of grants, curriculum, and programs, community health workers partner grant with IMA and Bridges Collaborative to cover the cost of two, two of our bilinguals got trained, so they're more familiar with all of the resources that are available in the city of Rochester. So when they're working with families, they know you have this need, okay, I know where you can get help in that area. Safe Schools Grant, I think we already announced that we did receive that grant, which is allows, going to allow us to hire a coordinator for the district. The LEAK Program, first year of innovative program to address the needs of transition-age youth with behavior disabilities. Maricor Health Vista Worker completed year one of their five-year grant with the Minnesota College Compact to address student health outcomes. And then the new math curriculum for special education. Social Emotion Learning Behavior Threat Assessment Team. This is when we have a student where we're really concerned that they may be at risk of maybe hurting themselves or others. We have individuals that can go out to that site and do a threat assessment of that student, determine what should we do, how to, what's our next step? And then the Student Resiliency Specialist. I think at one time I shared with you what we heard consistently from the students as the high school, especially sometimes when I go in for the counselors, I have a crisis and I can't, they say, well, come back in a couple hours or come back tomorrow. I need somebody now. So this position at the three high schools is, they don't have a is, they don't have a case load, they're there just to put out fires, and then if continuation needed, they'll get assigned to one of the other counselors in there. So that were three new positions we added. Panorama Student Survey, this is information regarding students' perception of school, not only school culture, but also their own socio-emotional competencies. And we quickly administered that this past spring, but the plan next year is be, it'll be given twice a year to all students. And then Universal Socio-Emotional Curriculum, this research base, and we looked at a variety of different programs out there and adopted the second step. We did have two of our elementaries that have been testing that for, I think, at least a year, maybe a couple of years. And that helped us make the decision on what to roll out next year. Area of Transportation, we've transported over 11.
That can't be right.
I think it's 111, Mike.
I may have too many ones. We transported a lot of students, I'll just say that.
Eleven.
Eleven what?
Eleven thousand.
Yeah, I thought, I got one, too many ones. So it's 11, a little over 11,000, almost 1,200, 12,000 students on buses. We had 98 AM routes, 103 PM routes, 853 special education students using 30 bus, bus routes in AM and PM, and 24 noon routes, 430 special education students using vans. And bus mileage solos, a big number there. There's your million. Van mileage, 385,000. But when you are a district of over 213 square miles, you're going to put a lot of miles transporting students around. Transportation Contract, negotiated a new five-year contract with First Students and Kennedy Transportation. District Vans, we were able to lease space and move, so all of our vans are inside, so they aren't going to be out in the cold during the winter. That was new this year. And then they, Scott's department is, is working on the bell time study committee, looking at options for a, changing the start times for secondary students. Construction Facilities, this year, the new Hoover Elementary Early Learning Center, which is a 36,000 square foot addition to Hoover, and also at a cost of $8.1 million, and did indoor air quality project for 4.5 million at Hoover Elementary. Lincoln District Wide Option did it, also did an indoor air quality project for 6.5 million. And long-term facilities, maintenance projects, multiple projects, the cost of 7 million. And did, if you remember, Andrew came and shared the 25-year equipment, vehicle plan, replacement plan, which is something new. An area of Radon Testing, seven sites this past year, which is part of our, every five years, every site will be tested. And the same thing with lead-in-the-water testing. Did 272 samples at six of our sites. And then cleaning plans developed, and instituted a building maintenance cleaning plan for each site using the most updated chemicals and square footage data and tech techniques that's out there. And that's the year. Any questions?
Just a comment. I think that everyone who casts a vote in the referendum should have to read through this list before they cast a vote. Because, you know, it's, it's the behind the scenes, behind the black curtain work that happens, and we don't hear about it. But, but it's a lot of work that's done. And anytime somebody questions, what do all those people in the Edison Building do?
Send them to the website. They can find, or Board docs, they can see it, yeah. All right, thank you.
I was just going to say, I think it's great to see everything that you and the Cabinet and the staff do as well. It's clearly a staff that doesn't feel that just the status quo is good enough, wants to do better all the time.
And is this available on our website?
It won't, it's not on the website, yet, but it will be, but it's, it is in Board docs.
I feel like you guys all deserve an app. I mean, this was, this was a lot to get done. Wow.
Yeah, I, like I said, I think we get too busy and don't take the time to think what all we've done.
Yep.
So it was a good exercise for us.
Good attitude.
Yes, it was. All right.
Okay, 7.01, Acceptance of Proposals for Contracted HVAC and Plumbing Service Work. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Mr. Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Operations, to brief us on this agenda item.
Good morning or afternoon.
It's almost morning, isn't it?
Freudian slip.
Feudian slip. Feels like morning.
I'm here to brief you on the proposals for contracted HVAC and plumbing service work. Back in July of 2015, you approved us to request proposals for the HVAC and plumbing services for our district. We currently don't have any master plumbers in the district, and so all the work that requires a master plumber, we have to contract out. And to make things easier, we wished to contract just one company, thinking we'd get a better break on costs and prices back in 2015. And it's worked out really well so far because we feel we've gotten breaks on the cost in addition to having the, the company that works for us is very familiar with the buildings, and so we don't have to reintegrate them into learning all the buildings, where all the systems are and all that. And so it works really well. When we did that contract back in 2015, it was for one year with three-year renewal after that. So we're at the end of that four-year timeframe. So we put out an RFP to update it. And we received that back on May 9th, I'm sorry, on May 24th, and we got proposals from two companies. And I want to let you know that I updated the spreadsheet. I failed to give you the actual prices that were proposed, and that's currently now in your Board doc for both the HVAC plumbing and the electrical. But it gives you an idea of what the increased costs were on the proposals. And through this process, we rated them, our purchasing manager rated them all based on their prices for weekdays from 6:00 AM to 3:30, weekdays after 3:30 until the following morning, which are different prices, and a price for Saturday and then a price for Sunday and holidays. And then for their past performance, because we use them, we, on projects, we see a lot of different plumbers and HVAC companies that get hired for our projects. And so they have past performance with us as well. Some, and majority of them do very well for us. And then the knowledge of the buildings, we rated them on as well. And the ultimate scores were then totaled. And it turns out that the same companies that we currently have contract with scored the highest on this latest contract. The names have been changing over the years. Harris, for the HVAC, I mean, for the plumbing, started out as Dimension, changed to HIMAC, changed to Harris. So, but it is the same company with a lot of the same workers. And they won the plumbing contract based on the score here. And then for the HVAC contractor, Pappy, who hasn't changed names and does all the, was the past contractor for the HVAC, won the contract again for this year. And so we're recommending you review those and allow us to award contracts to those two for the HVAC and plumbing.
Is it time-sensitive?
I'm sorry?
Is it time-sensitive?
You know, it actually is. This has been lingering there for a while, since I was off. And so the contractor, the RFP says they have so many days, we have so many days to approve it. And it's, I think another week or so we have.
So a motion to move to action?
Second.
And move in second to move to action. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Beat resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves a proposal from Pappy Construction for contracted HVAC services work, and approve of the proposal from Harris Companies Rochester for contracted plumbing service work for Rochester Public Schools.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.02, Acceptance of Proposal for Master Electrician of Record for Rochester Public Schools. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will brief this item as well.
Good evening again, Board members. This is for the Master Electrician of Record for Rochester Public Schools. Again, back in 2015, we ran into some concerns, this is about when I took over the facility program, we ran into some issues as far as who was doing the actual work for HVAC plumbing and electrical. In the electrical field, we met with the city to make sure that we were in compliance with all the codes and ordinances that required us, that are required in order to do electrical work. We found out that we were not. They stated that we needed a master electrician of record for us and that, but that we could certify some of our employees to do, to become registered on licensed electricians that work under that master electrician of record. But we had to have that master electrician of record who had a master's certification. And we didn't have any on our, in our district. So in order to make sure that all the work that we were doing, all the work that needed to be done was done correctly, we came to you back in 2015, and we did that same type of RFP contract as we did with HVAC and plumbing with electrical. And at that time, NEETS won that contract, and they have since changed names to Egan. And that was under the same one-year award plus three years after. And now we're at the end of that contract. So we put out an RFP to update it. And on the 24th, we got proposals from two companies. One was from Winkles Electric, and the other was from Egan. And through that similar scoring system that I described with the HVAC and plumbing, we applied that same process, and Egan scored the highest on that. And just as a note, they completed 612 work orders for us just in the last year for a total of about $210,000. It's really nice to have that resource there to be able to come in on a moment's notice to take care of electrical issues that we have. And so we're asking to, for you to review that and allow us to award that contract to Egan Companies for electrical services, master electrician of record.
Director Emerson.
I have a question. It just occurred to me. So we're potentially looking at four years' worth of, of services from these companies. Does that going to affect the, any new buildings that we construct?
No, those are all hired through the project itself. There's no guarantee that Egan would get those contracts for the new buildings. But it would potentially increase their service work that they would do once those buildings are up and running. They'd have more buildings, more responsibility.
Move to action?
Second.
All in favor, move to action?
Aye.
Beat resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves a proposal from Egan Company to be contracted as the district's master electrician of record per the language of the contract terms for Rochester Public Schools.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.03, Approval of Long-Term Facility Maintenance Revenue Application for Fiscal Years 2020 through 2028. Briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Sheridan will also brief us on this item.
Good evening again, Board members. And this is in relation to what's formerly known as the 10-Year Plan. We call it the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Revenue Application. There have been some law changes over the years since we started doing the 10-Year Plan. And now what MDE requires is us to fill out a revenue application on an annual basis. They don't necessarily need this entire document that spells out every little detail of what our plan is, even though we do provide it to them anyway. But they basically need the revenue application approved by the school board, preferably by the end of July. And they review it and award us what we need in order to allow us to continue on doing this This is all based on a, that facility assessment that we had done back in 2016, along with our own construction services division, who reviews all the different things that are going on in the buildings, to formulate a plan, along with input from the buildings themselves. And we formulate this wonderful spreadsheet. As you well know, this changes pretty much, by tomorrow it'll be changed again. But it does give you a really good idea of where we're focusing as far as what we need to look for in the future with our buildings over a 10, actually 11-year plan. That first year, that fiscal year 19 that you see on that plan is just a reconciliation. But the future, 20, 20 through 2029, is what we're looking to do in the future. I know that you look at the dollar amounts that are on there, and you think, oh my goodness, that's a lot of money. Yes, it is. But we've identified a lot of unfunded projects that are on here. And John and his division has come up with a bonded plan. If we decide to do it, there's no, this isn't, this isn't okaying that we're going to do this, but he laid out a bond schedule for us that would allow us to take care of a lot of the unmet needs that we get from the LTFMR revenue that we normally get from the state. So that's why you see those two big numbers. But you're not approving us to do those bonds. It's just that the state is being able to get this revenue application. So it's a lot of money. It's 49, over $49 million of LTFMR pay-as-you-go dollars. And then the unfunded projects are about 125 million dollars for a total of about 173 million over the next 10 years that we're looking at potentially doing. And I just need to emphasize again how fluid this document is. It may happen, it may not happen. It all depends what happens tomorrow with our buildings.
End of July, end of July?
End of July, yes.
Move to action.
Second.
Any discussion? Beat resolved that the School.
Anything?
All in favor of moving to action?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Beat resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan Revenue Application for Fiscal Years 2020 through Fiscal Year 2029 totaling 173 million, $97321 in major maintenance projects.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
7.04, Approval of People's Energy Cooperative Easement at Mighty Oaks Early Learning School Site Briefing Item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlos from the Executive Director of Finance will brief us on this agenda item.
Good evening, Chair Barlow, Superintendent Munoz, and Board members. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you about this item really quick. The agent for People's Energy Cooperative, I think their name is HDR, has approached us and asked us to have a formal easement running through the Mighty Oaks property. It would go basically right down the 50th Avenue corridor there. Actually, I already have a power line on our property, but they have never actually formally done an easement. And so they've been working with all the landowners on that road. They want to, one, upgrade the transmission lines so that there's more reliability in that neighborhood. And then, two, they want to set them back just a little bit in case, and get them out of the road right away in case Olmsted County ever decides to upgrade 50th Avenue into a wider road. So that would already be done and dealt with for the county's perspective. So we've looked at the proposed easement again, in part of it, it actually improves the power line location, moves it a little bit closer to the road, and another part, it moves it into our land a little bit. But we don't perceive that there would be any impact on our driveways, our parking, our playgrounds. You know, we don't have kids playing out by the road anyway. So we are looking at potentially adding another driveway in there. And so we've already staked that out. The people that are working with us on the plan, you know, know where the power poles might go. And they don't perceive that's going to be an issue. So. So, you don't need to move this to action tonight, this isn't a time-sensitive right now. They would compensate us about $3,300 for having that formal easement in place. This is very consistent with other rates we've gotten at other properties where we've given up a small amount of square footage.
Director Seeler.
John, what happens to that, that amount of money we would receive?
So what we do, there's an order you have to follow. If you have debt on the property, you're supposed to put it in the debt service fund. We do have bonds against that building from when we remodeled it, so we just put it, this $3,300 in the debt service fund. It would reduce a property tax levy in the future by $3,300.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Seven point zero five, approval of school district attorney briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, John will also brief us on this item.
Sure, thank you. We recently put out an RFP, we hadn't done this for over five years, and we had kind of committed to looking at all of our contracted service providers about every five years, plus or minus on those, and bring forward a recommendation to you. So we did that on May 17th, we asked for responses by June 14th. I think we sent out to six different law firms, or maybe even seven, and we got five back by the deadline. Three were from Minneapolis, two were locally from Rochester. Over the last few years, we've generally just appointed Dunlap and Seeger as our, our general counsel, but in reality, we've used Dunlap and Seeger and Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger. And it just depends on what the specialty of law and what the need was at the time. We asked them to respond with hourly rates, which attorneys would be working with us, would they be able to work on admin, HR, facilities, special ed law, kind of, you know, explain their areas of specialty. Not all firms said they could do all things. For example, Dunlap and Seeger specifically said, we can't do special education law, we can't do elementary and secondary law, we don't have the correct attorneys for that. RASW did say they could do everything, but as we looked at it, and we looked at hourly rates, we looked at kind of the local factor, we are recommending that Dunlap and Seeger be retained to continue working primarily with me on local issues with property, reviewing contracts, reviewing real estate records, since they're right here, excuse me, in Olmsted County and have an understanding of what's going on. So we figured that would be the best choice there. And then, based on our experience and then the rate, hourly rate that they charge, we feel that RASW would be the best for those other areas of law related to HR, special ed, elementary and secondary. So that is our recommendation, that you choose those two attorneys to represent the district.
Time-sensitive.
Generally, we approve an attorney every year in the July meeting, and since this is our only one, it would be probably helpful if you did that.
Move approval.
Second.
I don't move to action?
Move to action.
Start there.
Thank you.
Still second.
Discussion, all in favor of moving to action?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that Dunlap and Seeger and Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger be employed as general counsel for independent school district 535 Rochester Public Schools for the 2019-2020 fiscal year, July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Director Marvin and Seeler.
Just looking at the timeline, is that your question also, that we generally do five years and I see this is for one year?
Our, our practice has been to approve them every year at the July meeting.
Correct, okay.
But we probably wouldn't do an RFP unless we felt there was a reason we should look for different attorneys.
Thank you for clarification.
And just informationally, I think both are great firms and I approve both of them, but are there local law firms that do the kind of education law that you were talking about?
One did respond that they could, Wenland and Utz, or Utz, and we just didn't have any experience working with them. And so, and the other reason was their actual hourly rate was higher than the RASW that we're recommending. So we kind of decided if we spent in a thousand hours, we might actually spend more with them.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Be it resolved that-
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point zero six, approval of property and casualty insurance policy renewal briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this is Mr. Carlson's last agenda item for tonight.
All right, excuse me, thank you again. On October 1st, 2016, the district joined forces with a few other large school districts in Minnesota, Minnetonka, Hopkins, Mountains View, Rosemont, Apple Valley, Egan, Stillwater, and then last year, St. Cloud joined together with us, and now, starting this year, South Washington County also wants to join. We're part of a pool called Alliance for Liability and Property Services, also known as ALPS, and basically, we're, we're kind of like co-op-ing or we're partnering together to buy insurance so that when we go to the market, we're buying big policies with big limits at cheaper prices per coverage than what any of us could do on our own. So when we started in the pool, there were 64,000 students that were being covered by the policies, now there's 98,000 students. There were 209 school buses, now there's 267. There was $2.3 billion of school buildings covered, now there's $3.8 billion. So you can kind of see the, the high dollars that we're talking about. And the, and the good thing, the reason why the insurers like this is, one, we self-insure, we pay into a pool to cover the low-dollar claims. And then the insurance carriers are really only on the hook for these really big claims, and so we hardly ever have to use them, thus, they don't charge us as much for covering us. We insure the first $800,000 of claims annually, not every year do we spend the full amount of self-insurance. And when we don't do that, we actually have a chance to earn a dividend or get some of that money back. And so right now, we're sitting on a dividend of about $11,000 that could be returned to us. And that's something that doesn't happen in traditional insurance. You, you pay your premium, you don't get anything back. Another part that's really good is that we get a seat on the board, so each district gets to name one representative, and we make the decisions. We hire who we want to adjust our claims, we hire people to come by and do property appraisals, to do loss control inspections, to negotiate on our behalf, to find the coverage that is best for us. We also added in the last couple of years cyber liability insurance, a coverage that we never had. As soon as we added that, we had an incident here at the district and we were able to use that insurance policy. We also added a pollution insurance so that in case there's some sort of spill or something like mold in a building, we have coverage for that that we never had before. So we've been able to enhance our coverage and we've been spending less than what we did three years ago. Unfortunately, over the last year, there's been a lot of national disasters that are really affecting the insurance markets. So, when we went out to bid this year as a group, there were, let's just say, the insurance carriers wanted to be compensated more for the risks that they were taking all across the country, including the Midwest. It used to be assumed the Midwest didn't really have many bad things that happened, but we've been having our share of floods and tornadoes. In fact, our Bamber Valley, two meetings ago, got hit by a tornado on the roof, and we're going to have an insurance, a very large insurance claim on that coming up here. So, just going back to 2016, our premium went down, let's see, 8% that year, then went down 4% the year after that, then last year, we had a 10% increase, this year, we have a 12% increase. Basically, for the first three years we were in the pool, we paid less than we had in the years prior to that. So the program is working really well. And I think the program is still working well. We have more coverage, we have more buildings, we have more students, we have more vehicles, so kind of paying for just growth in our district as well as a small increase in the actual insurance rates and the loss fund. I feel overall, this is still a very good program for us. Like I said, we're, we're going to have a claim on the Bamber Valley roof that's going to cost more than our whole annual premium that we're paying in this year. So we're going to get all our money back in about six to 12 weeks probably. So, I would recommend that we stay in the pool for another year. It's working well, we're keeping our rates per hundred dollars of insured way lower than we could on our own, and I think we should continue on.
And Wendy, you need an answer for this?
Technically, the policy renewed on July 1st, so we're kind of still in, we just haven't paid our bill yet, so. And I think that's okay, I think if it needs to sit one more meeting, I think we'd be okay with that, but I would probably prefer if you approved it tonight.
Move to action.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Discussion, all in favor of moving to action?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 does hereby approve the district's membership in the Alliance for Liability and Property Services and be it further resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 purchased its liability, property and liability coverage from ALPS for school year 2019-2020?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point zero seven, approval of contract with International Center for Leadership and Education for Fiscal Year 2020, briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this is me. This is the work that we've been doing with, this is Dr. Daggett's organization, and the plan is to follow the same, pretty much the same format we did with Dr. Hawley. Next year, the first is to train all of the leaders and instructional coaches, and then year two, we'll come back with another contract where we will train the teachers. And it's really focusing on the instruction, effective instruction in rigorous relevance framework. I know a lot of detail tonight about that, but when we present in August our strategic plan, you're going to learn a lot more about that. You're going to hear a lot about Quad D, but we'll talk more about that when we present the strategic plan. But this is, even though you're not going to, you would not see one big check for that amount going out at one time, their pay is, you know, they provide the service, then you pay them, but the total amount is over the $175,000, so we're bringing that to you for your approval. And like I said, this is part of our professional development for this coming school year.
Any questions?
Just, just one.
Director Marvin.
Bill Daggett's an amazing person, his work is incredible. My concern, and clearly you know what you're doing and the cabinet knows what it's doing, but my concern is that this is one more thing. Is this going to fit into the work that we're already doing with staff development involving Dr. Hawley and, and others?
Yeah, we think it'll be a good fit, that we're not going away from the equity work. As I mentioned, we're still contracted with Dr. Hawley as well, but we think it's time to, we believe this is going to help us shift to the graduate profile, to get at the type of learning that our profile says we have to do. We feel this is the type of training that we have to provide our leaders and teachers in order to get to accomplishing that graduate profile.
Okay, thank you for that, because clearly, the graduate profile is going to be one of the big BOSI focuses moving forward, and the kind of thinking and teaching that that involves is different from what, some of what we've done in the past, so, thank you.
And, and the other part too is, there's a call, We Lead survey, this is a survey that will be given to all staff at a site where they provide feedback on their building leader from that site, so that's also part of the contract.
Move to action. Oh, sorry, question?
Just a quick question, so you, essentially, this is already in the budget we approved a month ago.
It's, yeah, the professional development funding will cover that, yeah.
And so, really, this, this state money for professional development?
Yes, it's money that can be only earmarked for PD.
Okay. Was there a second to the request to move to-
I'll second.
Further discussion, Director Anderson.
Being that we are going to learn more about it at the next meeting, would it make sense for us to wait and hear that presentation?
I mean, we could, but, I mean, technically, we could, wouldn't even have to bring it because we're only paying out. They provide the training and we'll write a check and it's way under 175, but we just felt that, end of the year, this is the total amount we're going to spend, so we felt more comfortable having you aware of that and proving that. We could have just said, we'll wait, the first time they come into work, we'll write them a check, pay-as-you-go type, I mean, that's how we're doing it, but we just felt more comfortable making you aware of the total agreement that we have, we want to do with this company.
Will there be any whiz-bang information provided later that would, you know, help us make that decision later versus the information you have already provided?
Well, I think what we'll probably talk a lot about is the, what his rigorous relevance framework and what Quad D really is, and that's the type of teaching we have to get to if we're going to get at the six parts of the profile. And we can't continue to teach the way we're currently teaching if we're going to work on those types of strategies, so, I mean, so we're going to talk more about what his framework is and what Quad D really is. I do, I will tell you, when we were up in DC for the Model Schools Conference, we took our two demonstration teachers from John Marshall and just were extremely excited about the work and the sessions they went to and are looking forward to doing this work, so. I mean, technically, we didn't even have to bring it here, we could just pay as we go, it's way under the 175 that way, but we just felt, when it's all said and done at the end of the year, this is what the total cost is going to be.
It's been moved in second, it's moved to action, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 does hereby approve the purchase of the contracted services of International Center for Leadership and Education for $187,278 from the fiscal year, $20 allocated for professional development?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven point zero eight, approval of revisions to the Policies and Procedures Manual, no pressure whatsoever, Deborah.
It's me and me alone. All right, I haven't done this in a while, so we're all going to be patient with me.
Well.
Trying to get through. No, you're not going to be patient.
Or not.
At least you're honest. Okay, so the policy committee met on July 2nd to review about six, seven policies here. And so I will go through the highlights. Policy 205 is our open and closed meeting policy. So, some changes, board members, if you go into the board docs and click on the policy, you'll see the changes in yellow and strike out is generally what we have focused on. So the changes are, one, that we have struck out at least and then used quorum of the school board. We have then added the number, and forgive me for going back and forth because my copy doesn't, my, my hard copy does not reflect the changes that Wendy has made on the digital copy, so apologies for any confusion on my part. So a meeting means a gathering of a quorum of the school board, and then we, we decided to identify a quorum as four members or more. And then, we have left the language at which members discuss, decide, receive information as a group on issues related to the official business of the school board. And then, is underlined added, is that what the, okay, thank you. Added, "A gathering of members that does not include a quorum of the board is not a meeting for the purpose of this policy or the open meeting law unless the board has expressly delegated decision-making authority to the committee. In the absence of an express delegation, all committee, all committees are advisory only and do not have a decision-making authority. The term meeting also does not include a chance or social gathering." So we have, and in addition to adding the number for the quorum, we have struck out the quorum for, of committee or subcommittee because they do not have any power. And so this had, this has gone through our legal counsel, and there's also, Wendy has told me, there's some additional legal references that have been added. So for example, we discussed if a committee or subcommittee, because our committees or subcommittees currently do not have any delegation power, they're not making any decisions or have any authority- or have any authority, they are not, they're not subject to, they're not considered a meeting. If, for example, a committee or subcommittee was delegated to have power, say, my, you know, I like examples, so say Don or the board chose a subcommittee to choose a lawyer, and that was their, that was their charge, then they would be subject, subject to the open meeting law because they were a committee and they had decision-making power. At this point, none of our committees have the decision-making authority, and so we changed to clarify that to reflect the current procedure for our subcommittees.
Questions?
Yep.
So, the original policy is from MSBA model policy, or something that has been unique to us? Do we know? And, and so, the changes are R words that have been run by legal, not recommended wording changes, but are preferred wording changes?
Correct. So, my understanding is that, that all our policies are based on model MSBA policy, and this one looks like it was last revised a year ago, and probably, I don't remember, word for word. But because we were, because we now have subcommittees in play, which we didn't always have, although we have for a number of years, the question about, do those constitute a meeting, we asked legal to give us an opinion on that because, just for clarity's sake, and according to that, the, because there's not quorum of the board in our subcommittees, and because they have no authority to make decisions, those are not considered a meeting under the open meeting law.
Right, and, and I think that's, that's wise. I'm just clarifying that the wording isn't recommended at something that fits Rochester specifically and has been reviewed.
Yes, correct. So, per our practice of our, our subcommittee.
Ambiguous.
Right.
And maybe we should let MSBA know, because I thought there are other districts that could benefit from the wording change.
Possibly.
It's wise.
And, thank you for the great work. I also appreciate the clarifying language as it relates to social gathering, and I think that's, did you want to have us act on these individually, or?
We cannot.
Oh, representing them, and we won't do them later.
Yes, and so, along with this, actually, just some reading I did today, because I had nothing better to do. Sorry. It's late, I'm making silly jokes. To Don's point about the social gathering, I think, you know, that wording has always been in there. But some of the reading I was doing today talked about boards and board development, board self-evaluation, should look at their board policies every year, and we do look at our ethics policy every year, but this might be another one going forward that whether it's on the schedule or gets changed every night, because it relates to our work, we may just want to have on our annual calendar of something we look at. Is there any questions? Is there any changes? That's just my side. Okay. All right. Any other questions on that? Second is Policy 213. The changes here, we just, again, noted in yellow on board docs. We had the word procedures, we're now using the word process, and we have added in section, this is, sorry, 213, up for revision, school board committees. Section four, under process, now, A, all meetings, or all meetings of committees or subcommittees shall be held in compliance with the open meeting law, and notice shall be given as prescribed by law as outlined in Policy 205. So, just adding that reference back to the policy we just adjusted and changed. That's fairly straightforward.
Can a minor change the word?
Processed from procedure to process.
Thank you.
Policy 401.01, Employee Personnel Recruitment and Hiring. So, this, we had a little bit of discussion in the general statement of policy. We wanted to, procedures will be established and recruitment methods in order to reach a broad audience in an effort to hire quality personnel that reflects the population. And we decided to end the sentence to reflect our population. We know that we want our, all our staff and teachers to reflect the diversity of our students, and we could list those by gender and gender identification and race and ethnicity, but we just decided to go with, reflect our population. And then, other changes, responsibility for the provisions, adding executive director in the responsibilities for provisions of this policy. At the end, requirements for this policy, we have, we have struck, any licensed employee will be in good physical and mental health, although we do want them to be that. It does not belong to policy. To the extent permitted by law, we have added that sentence. The school board reserves the right to require or request that any employee have a physical examination. And then, the last one on this, we are striking, the school board reserves the right to require blood tests of all recommended applicants. We don't do that. That is not a practice, so that is free to leave the policy, and then striking all procedures, as has been our practice.
Director Abelson.
Minor point. When we strike the part about reflecting the population, are we talking about the population of our community, or of the students in our schools, or something else entirely?
I'd say both, because our student population is a reflection of our community. I mean, since we are a public school, we're, we're probably a better reflection of our community than...
Generally, that would be true. I, I wouldn't say it's guaranteed to be true. It, it's a minor point, but I'm just raising it.
So, the original, the original phrasing was to reach a broad audience in effort to hire quality personnel that reflect the population, does not say it, with regard to gender identity or expression and ethnicity. So, that was sort of where we were going. And so, we, we took those specific pieces out. We did not have a discussion about the word "population" or what the population refers to.
And we took gender and ethnicity out because we wanted to be more broad than that?
We wanted it to be a little bit more broad. We had some discussion back, back and forth. We could have used the, the same language that lives elsewhere in terms of equal opportunity, which is now, I don't remember them all, gender express, gender identity or expression, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic, the whole, the, the list. We just decided for, at this meeting anyway, for brevity's sake, our recommendation was just to go to reflect the population.
Right. I'm not opposed to, I'm just curious for being clear.
Would it make it any more comfortable or a little more specific if it said reflects the population of the school district? I mean, I think population absolutely could be taken either way, but I'm just wondering if that would be, eliminate any question there? You know?
Is there any downside to amending it to say population of school district?
Well, I, I, my only worry is that, would that be too prescriptive that, I mean, reflect the population of our school district? Our school district is minority, or is majority white, and so, I feel like, are we saying that the majority of our staff should be white versus, you know, trying to focus on, we want more diversity, you know?
True.
We would like to, to be more reflective, that's all. I think it could be argued either way.
I'm fine with it staying the way it is.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Policy 412, which is an employee personnel policy on expense reimbursements, and all we are doing here is striking out the procedures at the end. Assuming there's no questions about that. Policy 504 is our dress code policy. I don't have a hard copy of this, but easily enough, all that we are changing, deleting from this policy is hats or caps are not allowed to be worn in the building except with the approval of the building principal. This came forward, I believe Superintendent says, from our particular high school principals that students wear hats and caps quite often, and it would be a great job of policing to make all our students take off their hats or caps, and probably not necessary, noteworthy. And of course, if they were, I'm assuming, if they were wearing a hat or cap, if it had a advertising for something that's not prohibited by one of the other bullet points, that for sure, they would need to be removed, so they can't wear their Budweiser cap, but they could wear a Honker's cap. Yes?
I remember years ago in the district, there being a lot of focus on hats and caps because of gang affiliation. Do we have any information about whether that's still a common concern?
That was what I brought up when Superintendent asked kind of where that came from. That was my assumption as well, and...
I haven't heard it in the eight years I've been here.
Yeah, so I'm assuming...
From the olden days, then?
Yeah, that, coming from principals who probably are, are a little bit more in touch. If, I think if that was still a concern, that they would, they would let us know. Any other questions on that? Yes?
This is nitpicky, and I'm just going to ask anyway. So, for instance, if a student is, comes to school the first day wearing a hood, so you can't see the student's face at all. I'm just thinking from a practical, would the staff, whatever?
Well, I, I would, I'm not a building principal. I would say that that could, depending on what that looks like, that could fall under, create a health or safety hazard if the hood is so over their face that they couldn't see to walk and are walking into things. Other than that, I, I don't got anything for you.
That maybe will do it. Thanks.
Well, and the wording of the policy is already very vague. It doesn't say must or, you know, will. It says encouraged to. So, it's already a weak wording. I wouldn't worry too much about.
That point, I'll take.
Yeah, in fact, further under the general statement of policy, I, I believe, item to be to clothing, that does not create a health or safety hazard, so that's already addressed within there.
And it says not limited to, so that would cover.
Questions? Thank you. Next, we have Policy 713, Student Activity Accounts. Is this new? So, Student Activity Accounting, John walked us through this one, and this, the changes in this come from the new laws, I'm looking for nods, about, about student activity counts coming under control of the school board, and so John spoke to that recently. And so, we, we changed the terming, we had, the school board will take charge of or control over, and we just said controls, because that's what the law now says. Took out some things that were not, no longer needed. The other one mentioned throughout is the Manual for Activity Fund Accounting, MAF-A, that is no longer used. As I understand it, we use, it will come in under the UFR system, as John has mentioned, so those references have been struck. Activities under control will be recorded in the same manner that other revenues and expenditures of the district will be turned over to the treasurer, so similar. This is just more things how it will be handled in the finance office. We did have some discussion under, let's see, Section four, Management and Control of Funds, number five. Any residual money from a graduating class activity fund will remain in the general fund and may be used for any school district purpose unless specified on the Student Activity residual form. So, we had a discussion about, about the, the money being left over by a graduating class, that it could be used for anything, but John pulled up the form that in that instance, there is this form they have to fill out. They're going to be collecting money, and they say what they want it to go towards, and so, it's kind of an upfront thing, so we kind of added that in just for clarity, so that anyone donating to that account would know. I don't, I don't know much about this area, but if the graduating class of 19 collected money and they wanted that money go to the graduating class of 20, they have to say it on the form upfront, and so that would be controlled in that way. And then, in the last section, just taking out the reporting piece. Any questions on that?
So, the wording change was all strictly recommended?
Yes, so, and was this from MSBA? Yeah, so MSBA gave us several choices on how to do some of the language, and so, we just, with John's recommendation, made some of those, took, took the suggestions that worked for us, and then the only thing that we sort of tweaked, like I said, was the piece about the, the graduating class activity fund. Okay. Any other questions on that? Policy 722, pardon me, will I be a guest at RPS again? Public data requests. Is this new?
This is the brand new.
Okay. Oh, look, I wrote "new" on it. So, this is a new policy. It is a model policy from MSBA to deal with data requests, so I will not read this all to you. You are free to do that on your own if you haven't already. Probably biggest conversation was around, because we get these requests for data, we know that it's happened in the past, kind of the process for that and the responsible authority, who is the superintendent, and then also, this came from cabinet, I believe, the costs of the request and how, which is Section six, the school district will charge for copies provided as follows, and so, based on what is being asked for and how much is being asked for, and then any sort of, you know, it's not, if something was, again, example, if a hundred copies of something were being asked for, it's not just the paper, it's also, there's some residual costs of someone standing there to make the copies, or the wear and tear on the machine, or things like that, and so that's how they determined costs for copying. Otherwise, it's fairly straightforward, unless you have questions, which I would probably direct back to Superintendent.
Director Abelson.
She looks at me before I even raise my hand. So, the wording changes was pretty much as recommended from, I mean, no, no straight from?
We worked with legal counsel, and this is, actually reflects our practice, because I would say probably in the last couple of years, we've been getting a lot more requests, not only locally, but from the Twin Cities areas, and legal counsel said, this is what you can do. For example, if they request something that's going to take some time for somebody to collect that, you, this sounds a little bad, but the cheapest person that can do that work is what you charge with their hourly rate plus benefits would cost, so...
This also speaks to the consistency of no matter who, it's, it's very objective, so no matter who is asking for information, it's, it's very straightforward, and, you know, no one could claim, well, you know, the vote yes, people got information for free, and the vote no, people got, got charged for information, and so, I appreciate that. We do know, not necessarily here, but other districts have had huge data requests costing a great deal of money, so I think this is a great sort of protection policy, and it makes sense. It's what we do, and so it should be straightforward.
So, at the bottom of the policy, it lists administrative contact information. Is that part of the policy, or is that just a note? So, that means the policy would have to be changed if the email address or person in charge changed. Would it be prudent to make a generic email address such as superintendent@rochester.ktl, so that we don't have to change it, and then have it forwarded to your personal email account? I mean, otherwise, we just need to make a mental note if it ever, I mean, I imagine you're not going to work till you're 90 years old, so someday, we would have to change policy upon changing individual.
I mean, what's the exact wording of it?
Well, just down on the bottom, it's the Data Practices Contact, and so, remember, we discussed on who that was going to be, and we just decided it should all go through the Superintendent's office, but in, in this draft, it has the, which I know isn't your personal number, the 328-3000, but it has your, Mike Munoz's email.
Oh, contact information.
So, I don't know if there's a generic Superintendent. So I don't know if there's a generic Superintendent email.
Well, it can be created, it's just a referral.
Well, we used to have one, but we don't have one now.
No, it's...
You've got the address there and I'm thinking, people can contact that address and get, 10 years from now, get the email of whoever the Superintendent is.
The email will bounce.
Just...
But the number will stay the same. Because there's no, there's no generic like finance email or...
Well, I, I used to have, there was, I don't think it still exists anymore. At one time, we did have to create a, a separate just Superintendent's email for a situation where an individual was being very inappropriate to staff and they were directed, the only communication you can have to the district is through this email account.
But that's not tracked.
It doesn't exist anymore, but, and, and the good, it may be a quick, wouldn't be that difficult to change 20 years from now.
We just have to remember to, 20 years from now.
Well, it won't be 20.
But, good, good question. We did, we did discuss that as well. Anything else on that? Okay. This is the policy committee report.
Thank you very much for the update. And just as a point of order, we asked, you know, Director Nathan was not able to be here. She is our board clerk and we needed to actually have an appointed one, so I'll do so at this point federally than ever. Director Abelson? You'll be, clerk of record. And this meeting is adjourned at 9:21 PM.